I'd like to call the meeting to order. And can we have a roll call, please, Gabe?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II,
here.
Councillors Newton,
here.
Novak, Montague,
here.
Kaczynski, McGee,
present.
and Smith.
Here.
Five members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone for coming today. I'd like to offer the floor to City Manager Peter Trotein. Is your microphone on?
I just wanted to acknowledge the presence of our Budget Committee members, Will Summers and Terry Vernig. Thank you for coming.
All right, I think we're rolling now. Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Thank you for being here this afternoon and tomorrow afternoon, where you will be hearing a series of briefings from the senior staff of our city. These briefings are intended to provide a comprehensive look at our missions and our workforce. If you were to ask me, how are you fulfilling the city's mission to provide quality public services for a better Albany community? And another question, what does it take or what will it take to realize the city's vision of a vital and diversified community that promotes a high quality of life, great neighborhoods, balanced economic growth, and quality public services? These briefings should provide the answers. For new Councillors, we recognize that this is their first comprehensive look. And although we aim to get you up to a reasonable speed on as many issues as we can, as quickly as we can, we also realize that this is truly drinking from a fire hose. We welcome the opportunity to prepare all of you with background information as you begin to grapple with city issues. And we're always available to answer your questions or address your concerns. I too want to join Councillor Smith in welcoming those of our Budget Committee members who can attend this afternoon, as well as those who might be watching remotely. The last time we did this was in February 2021. It was for the same purposes. This is a complex organization that you oversee and for which you provide policy guidance and strategic direction, and for which you appropriate resources to operate. Inevitably, even though we've scheduled you for eight hours over the next two days, which is a lot of time, I acknowledge that, it won't be enough time. Either for staff to convey the complexities of the city's operations or for you to ask all the questions that you might find yourself wondering about. There's no way we can completely communicate the length and breadth of what your city does in the time we have available. On the other hand, you don't have to know every last detail. Your job as a councillor is to provide guidance and oversight. Our aim in these meetings is to give you an idea of what it is that you're guiding and overseeing, where we are, and what challenges face us. To help convey as much important information as possible, I've asked directors to follow a standard format, providing first, the department mission and how it supports the city's mission and strategic plan; second, an organizational overview; then a significant listing of or a description of significant accomplishments in the last couple of years; an environmental assessment; challenges in the next biennium; and then any resource limitations that we face. But in a sense, this restriction is a metaphor for our operations. There is not enough time to communicate everything, just as there are never enough resources with which to provide the services that are needed. So this will be an exercise in succinctly conveying the most important information. There'll be an opportunity for questions after each presenter. And because I anticipate that we won't have enough time, we'll have what's called a parking lot for issues and questions that will arise that aren't immediately answered. City services are interrelated and complementary. Think about the role that literacy plays in public safety as you hear from our police chief and from our library director. Think about firefighting without a dependable water distribution system when you hear from our Public Works Director or Fire Chief. Think about the role that green spaces and quality recreational programs play in attracting investments for economic development when you hear from our Parks Director. But enough from me, let's get down to business. Tonight, you're going to hear about law enforcement from our police chief. Our law enforcement system can't effectively carry out its mission without a municipal court. You'll hear about our municipal court from Gina Jaeger. And you'll hear a separate, later on in February, you'll hear a separate state-of-the-court presentation from Judge Forrest Reed. We'll take a 15-minute break. And then we'll hear about our fire, EMS, and emergency management programs from Chief Wooton. The City Manager's Office will then cover our enterprise-wide management responsibilities. And then we'll hear about retention, recruitment, training, and other HR issues. Finally, the secure and efficient flow of information is key to everything we do. And the last staff presentation you'll hear today is from our CIO, Sean Park. We will be as quick and efficient as possible, since there's a lot of information. And first up, I would ask Marsha Hardin, our Police Chief, to come to the table.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councillors. Thank you for joining us today. I'm going to try to describe a very large organization in 45 minutes. I spent a lot of time up until the 11th hour on Friday trying to get the most accurate picture for you. But we are a large department for the city. And I'll do my best to answer any questions you have if I move too fast. So bear with me here. A little bit about me. This is my, this week is my third anniversary with the City of Albany. Previous councillor and our City Manager entrusted me with leading the Police Department in January of 2020. And lots changed. If you would have told me back then that I would be dealing with COVID and all of the social unrest and everything else that goes with government these days, I might have a little bit less gray hair. I could have prepared better. But it's been a, it's been an interesting ride. So, and I look back at this presentation from 2021. And lots changed, and we've accomplished a lot. You should be very proud. So our topics are going to be our department mission. I'll give you an organizational overview, as Peter said, some significant accomplishments, some of the challenges we are facing, some of the opportunities, and some public safety concerns. And please stop me anytime if you have any questions. We just recently revised our mission statement, which is a standard practice for us to do as a part of our strategic planning process. So this mission statement, which is in final draft form, but will probably be our final, is that the Albany Police Department is dedicated to ensuring the safety and wellness of our community through engagement. We achieve this by employing dedicated members who have the utmost integrity and are adaptable to the evolving needs of the community we serve. Our values are integrity, adaptability, teamwork, dedication, service, professionalism, and wellness. Our tagline is excellence through service. You'll see that quite a bit on all of our engagement practices. One of the things that we did when we put our strategic plan together is we wanted to really wrap our minds around what we stood for in policing. In 2015, the Obama administration put together a Presidential Committee on Policing following the Ferguson events in Ferguson, Missouri, and came up with the 21st century policing model, which we have fully embraced as a police department. I don't know if you have in front of you. Some of these texts are a little bit small, but I'll try to cover them. Pillar number one is building trust and legitimacy. We can't do our job if our community does not trust us to do that job. People are more likely to obey the law when they believe that those who are enforcing the law have legitimate authority to tell them what to do. The public confers legitimacy only on those they believe are acting in a procedurally just manner. Pillar two, policy and oversight. As you know, we are a CLEA International Credit Agency, and I'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. But we strive to develop policies and procedures and a culture based on community expectations and values. We're constantly reevaluating those values. Pillar three, use of technology and social media. If you follow us on, follow us on social media, you know that we use this pillar very well. So we've been very successful in engaging our community and implementing new technologies that give us the opportunity to fully engage and educate communities in the dialogue about their expectations, transparency, accountability, and privacy. And I heck a lot of humor in there as well. Pillar number four, community policing and crime reduction. Again, public safety is a partnership. We cannot do it alone. So we have strove to build relationships with our community members in the effort to bring about a sense of safety within Albany. Pillar five is training and education. When I came to Albany, I heard repeatedly from employees, "We don't get enough training." And we know from policing across the United States that one of the first fail areas when something bad happens within a police agency or in a community is a look at training. So we've endeavored on bolstering that. I'll talk a little bit about that as well. And then pillar six, officer wellness and safety. My belief personally, I've been doing this for 30 years, is that a well-police officer will engage the community in a much better way. They'll have more positive interactions. If they're angry, bitter, desensitized, things like that, that's what the community will feel. And we don't want to be there. So making sure that we build a strong culture of wellness within the agency. So that is the six pillars of the 21st century policing model. And within those, that umbrella, we developed a strategic plan. It's currently being revamped for 23 to 25, 2023 to 25. We just performed a review earlier this month and looking to see if we need to tweak these at all. But most of the goals are still firmly in place. Number one is to build a robust, highly-performing workforce. That goes back to training and wellness and making sure that we're hiring empathetic, highly intelligent, emotionally intelligent police officers. And then giving them tools and training and support to do their job well. Number two is utilizing data and technology to further our mission and efficiencies. On any given day, I can look to see what's happening in the City of Albany. I can see where burglaries are happening, where auto thefts are happening. And every Monday morning, we sit down and figure out what's going on in the city and where the trends are. We look at how many car accidents there are. We look at if there's any particular group that's active in our city that we need to address. So we use that technology quite a bit. And those include the tools. Whether it be every officer having an iPhone so they can openly communicate with citizens, get pictures, they can take crime scene photos and distribute those to other officers very quickly. Whatever it takes to make sure that their job is more efficient. Good stewardship of public funds. I give a lot of credit to my predecessor, Chief Latanzio, who set the department up for success by making good, solid decisions in our future. As we know, the government is expensive. Cars are expensive, equipment's expensive. Our biggest costs are employees, making sure that we have proper use and good funds to make sure that the police department stays whole and that we're using our citizens' money wisely. Maintain and grow community engagement and trust. One of those goals, a subset of goal number four is to increase our social engagement, community engagement, and our social media engagement. We've, that is an accomplishment you'll hear about coming up. Strengthening community and city partnerships. If you've been in, been to an OSU football game, OSU basketball game or baseball game, you will see Albany police officers working those games. And those are some of the partnerships that we strive to put in place. We had a good relationship with Lynn County Mental Health to the point where we end up taking their employee and making them their own because we saw the need for a mental health professional. So strengthening those partnerships, making sure that our children and our school system feel safe by doing lockdown drills and identifying gaps within our school system and trying to get those addressed. These are all strategic goals that we work through on a daily basis. Now, this is our organizational chart. I don't expect anybody to read this, but it kind of gives you an idea of the size and scope of the Police Department. Behind me at the table is both Captain Jerry Drum and Captain Brad Lyles that oversee the 96.25 positions that the Police Department has. We currently sit at six vacancies. Only two of those are police officer vacancies. And I know the councillor's heard from me before that this has been a struggle. We, at one point in 2021, had 15 police officer vacancies. We've worked hard to attract good candidates, keep the ones we have. And we are probably the lowest, as far as vacancies, of any police department in the region here. And we don't anticipate, other than regular retirements, losing anybody in that process. We do have two dispatcher positions. That's again an area of struggle for public safety agencies. We are looking to replace a community service officer who recently retired and one police clerk. So it's an ongoing hiring. Since I've been here at Albany, again, we have 90, I think there's a, there we go. We have 96.25 FTEs if we're fully staffed with a two-year budget of approximately $35 million. For us, to hire one-third of those employees in the three years I've been there, we've hired 38 employees. That's a huge feat for any government department. And I have to give a big credit to our HR department for working with us on that, with their limited staff. So we have 96.25 FTEs, $35 million, two-year budget. 65 of those 96 employees are police officers. And we recently did a survey with the union. 45% of our police officers have less than seven years' experience. As a chief, that's an interesting, a little bit scary place to be. There's a lot of very, very young people in this profession. It's incumbent on us as leadership to give them good tools and training to make sure that they're going to be safe and keep the community safe. Some of our significant accomplishments. Hiring, I just spoke about that. For every employee that we hire, we probably touch at least 10 to 15 people for one employee. So that's either through a testing process, through a background investigation, something like that. That amount of work is unprecedented. Prior to my arrival, they would hire between three and five people per year. And that's on the high side. In the last, well, last year we hired 16. So that's quite a bit of hiring. And again, that was a threat for a long time for us, but it's a huge accomplishment in getting these people onboard. I don't know if most people know that if you hire a brand-new, inexperienced police officer, so somebody who's never been in policing before, it takes 18 months from the moment they start the process to the moment they hit the street. So for every vacancy we have, even if we hire a body, it'll be 18 months before we see that person working independently. So we've worked hard to try to get experienced police officers, some of which have come from us, to us from local agencies. One from Sweet Home, one from Corvallis, one from Toledo, one from McMinnville, one from Tualatin. And we recently hired a female lateral out of the state of Colorado, all of which have good experience they brought to the department. So hiring is a huge success. Our accreditation. Later this year, our staff, including Peter, will travel to Bellevue, Washington. It's ironic that that's where our reaccreditation will be, is in Bellevue, Washington, to get our first full reaccreditation. So later this year, we'll get a visit from the CLEA assessors to take a look to make sure that our policies and practices match what we say they do. That's huge. International accreditation is a big deal in policing. Only three other police departments in the state of Oregon have that particular level of accreditation, one of which is Washington County, and the other is Corvallis Police Department. And we are the third. It is a very high level. It's a lot of work at all. So make sure that we have the best practices in place. We are well on, well on our way to get our full accreditation completed. As well as the last two years, they do a yearly check-in with us. And our accreditation manager, Mayor B. Smith, each year that they have checked our records and put us through a small test, absolutely no changes were recommended. They gave us a clean bill of health, so to speak. So that makes us very happy.
So that's this year for 2023 to '25? The recert?
Recert is this year. So we were, we were accredited originally in 2019. And then this is the four-year mark at 2023. So it's a four-year cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good question. Next is our wellness program. If you haven't met Bentley, that's his picture in there. It's a, it's a small one. He is one part of our wellness efforts. Again, I've mentioned many times that a healthy police department will have better interactions with its community. So we've really invested in the wellness of our staff. From, basically from stern to stem, meaning the minute an officer comes in the door to the very minute that they retire, we do everything in between to make sure that they're healthy, both mentally, physically, emotionally, spiritually, financially, et cetera. All of our new employees get introduced to wellness when they come in the door. Anything major traumatic happens, we have a support team, peer support team in place to help them. We have Bentley, who lives at our police station 24/7, other than going home with an employee on occasion. He's been a great asset. And he's actually opened a lot of community engagement doors for us as well. We have been, we have basically been a role model for some of the other police agencies around us when it comes to wellness. Captain Drum and myself have been invited to talk in other parts of the country and parts of the state about our program and how well it has taken hold in Albany Police Department. And there's actually financial benefit to it as well. One of the things we did when we embarked on a physical fitness program and put in a department gym is we looked at our workers' comp usage and our healthcare issues prior to starting this program, and then have looked at it afterwards. Now, it takes years of data, but initially, we are seeing some good positives when it comes to dropping of both the dollars that go into both of those, those areas, both workers' comp and healthcare usage. So there's a financial benefit to it as well. And then we don't have people that are out sick, out injured, and the like. So we're very proud of our wellness program.
Chief?
Yes.
Is there a, has insurance taken a look with our insurance rates with incorporation of the fitness program?
It is, we're only a couple of years into it, so we'll probably have to get some more years of data behind it. But one of the things that we tracked is the number of injuries that come through, the amount of employees that are out sick and the like. And we've already seen some positives from that. It'll take years of data probably before we'll know a long-term impact on, on our healthcare usage.
Well, I mean, as far as rates, like Peter. So like when you buy a car and it has a security system, the rates are lower. I'm hoping that we'll see a decrease in our insurance premiums for that, too.
Certainly would be a great question for our HR Director. And, and I would hope that you would see that with this program.
Thank you.
You'll have it. You'll have a chance to hear from Director Roden later this evening. But I think, as the chief points out, it takes some experience, years of experience, not a lot, but it has to, you know, when you're, when you're getting your car insured, a lot of it depends on your past record. So we have to develop that record.
I'm just curious, do we have any data on our employee retention for police?
It, it has greatly improved. So when we look, when we lose an employee, like we did between 2020 and the current rates, we look at why they're leaving. Standard retirement sets to be expected. To my knowledge, we've only lost two employees in the last three years that have gone to other police departments because they're not happy with it here. Nationwide, we saw a massive attrition out of law enforcement due to public sentiment towards policing. And so we've worked really hard to build it, build a very positive culture to try to keep those people in policing. What you're seeing with that seven-years-average tenure, that you're seeing all of that institutional knowledge that has left. And people have said, "Hey, I'm, I'm done with policing." And we've lost a couple of employees for that. They've left for health reasons and mental health reasons as well. So again, well, another probably few years, we'll be able to tell where we're at as far as retention is concerned. I do know that anecdotally, we've had employees say, "I was thinking of leaving, but now I'm going to stay." Even with people who left law enforcement, because we were in such a staffing crisis, many of them stayed on months longer than they had planned to because they wanted to help us out. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Let me make sure I got everything on wellness here. On the training front, we, one of the things I heard when I came here, again, I mentioned this earlier, is that many of our employees didn't feel that they had enough opportunity to engage in training. So we have embarked on the effort to hold, host at one, at least one training in our committee room from some sort of education in policing at least once a month. And I believe the last average was 2.5 per month. Usually, these are week-long classes. So we were bringing good training to the Police Department so that our, we're not incurring the cost. They get more training, we're not incurring the cost of sending them elsewhere. A lot of people don't know that the City of Albany has a tuition reimbursement plan. So we've had a number of employees complete higher education, both bachelor's degrees and a couple of master's degrees. So it's something that we value very much. Some of the noted training that, that I want to make mention is one of our key goals was to get all of our sworn staff Crisis Intervention trained, or CIT, trained. Currently, we're at 50 of those officers trained out of 65. And we should have everybody trained by mid-year. That has required us to be very creative about how we do that training because obviously, we have to put officers on the street. And you can't just unplug an entire team and send them to training. So we have brought in a trainer that will do a day here and a day there to get people trained. And then as our staffing allows, we'll send them to other parts of the state to get training as well. I will tell you, Crisis Intervention Training is mandated under state law in Washington State, where I came from. And once it was mandated, two to three years after it was mandated, you saw a significant change in use of force. And we always want to drive down that use of force. So it was a strategic goal to get that training out to our folks. As well as some of the big challenges we're seeing when it comes to dealing with acute mental illness in the community, this training speaks directly to those problems and how to reduce physical interactions with police and get people the help that they need. So Crisis Intervention Training is very key. And then also, we invited an organization out of Florida called The Right Training. It's racial intelligence training and education. Not cheap training, but very, very good. If you've been to our, in our station lately, you'll see pictures of ladders. And they're about, you'll see emotions on those ladders. One of the key benefits to that training is it really helps us identify a healthy culture and build a healthy culture within the Police Department. So if an officer is way down on that ladder and they're angry and disillusioned or something like that, do you want them on the street dealing with your citizens? No. So that is an internal mechanism where we can help our folks really engage in positive cultural, cultural interactions. Again, healthy culture in a police department means lower issues with our community members. Any questions about accomplishments before I move on? Okay, again, I'm trying to cram a lot of information.
I did have a question.
Yes.
So you mentioned the training that you were just talking about. But, and you had mentioned emotional intelligence training. Is that like an ongoing training? Do you have those on a regular basis? Or is it a one-time thing and then they're, check the box, they're done? Because in my experience, that emotional training, or emotional intelligence training is, is that inner work that, like, constant work, right? So I'm concerned that it's a check-the-box kind of training and maybe not an ongoing kind of.
Yeah, it is, that's a great question. When the Right Training Organization came to Albany, four of our people became instructors so that we can continue to train our staff. And we can also train our partners in the region. Two of the instructors are going to present at the chief's conference in September on this issue because we can now train on behalf of that organization. There's also some other groups that spend a heavy amount of time dealing with emotional intelligence and leadership. We strongly encourage all of our sergeants and above to participate in a program. It's called FBI LIDA. And there's three stages, supervisory, command, and leadership institutes, all of which touch on emotional intelligence. I will absolutely tell you, you're not a good leader unless you really work on good emotional intelligence and the leadership there embraces it and makes sure that it's part of our culture. So it's, it's an ongoing thing. All right, now for some not-great news. So we know the City of Albany is growing. I do, I think unofficially, we're rapidly approaching 60,000 if we haven't already, which means that your calls for service go up. And that's any call to 911, a citizen calls on a non-emergency number. And that's any call to 911, a citizen calls on a non-emergency number, an officer spots somebody and pulls them over for speeding, they all generate calls for service. Those have gone up 2.5% and have been steadily climbing up with a little bit of an asterisk around 2020 because that was just an odd time for public safety. So in 2022, we had 32,442 calls for service, up from 31,643 in 2021. So again, that takes staff work to handle those calls. The other concerning area, and actually, these numbers were better than I expected in talking to our crime analysts, and we do have a full-time crime analyst at the department that looks at this on a daily basis, is that our violent crime has climbed up 5%. And these are things like robberies, homicides, things like that. Robbery is probably the, numerically, the driver here. So violent crime in 2022 was 102 incidents versus 97 the year before. So not huge numbers, fortunately. Albany is still a safe city, something I would always be very, very mindful in watching. The property crime, that's another different story. So this has been a significant jump up from the previous time that I reported out to council and has been steadily climbing. By far, theft, particularly auto theft and car prowls and larcenies, all you have to do is see our social media and see that our retail stores are just getting absolutely hammered with thefts. And sometimes they're organized retail thefts. Being on I-5 corridor, we would normally expect that, but 25% jump in property crime is concerning, particularly auto theft. In that is, we see a higher likelihood that people run from the police. And so we do have a fairly conservative pursuit policy, but these people oftentimes drive in a really reckless manner. So there's a concern there. So the, just to show you what the 2021 numbers were, they, actually, it was 2020 numbers that I reported out, that was 5.1 overall. Violent crime at that time was 8.6 and property crime was up 4.9. So going from 4.9 jump to 23 is concerning as far as I'm looking at it. With car prowls and the like, very often, unless we catch somebody in the act or can get somebody identified through good video, some of these do not go solved and they remain unsolved. So some concerns there and we'll talk about how staffing plays into that. Some of the challenges, contributors to crime is obviously, we, it should be no surprise to anybody that we've seen a drug crisis set in in the state. Albany is no exception to that. Just, I know I've talked to the council before, but since there are new members in Albany, Albany proper, within city limits, we had nine overdose deaths in 2022. That is more than the previous three years combined. And I consider it one of the biggest threats to our community safety is the presence of fentanyl. And it's flowing in, we're seeing that it is in everything. We're seeing it laced in marijuana, in methamphetamine, in cocaine and the like. So people might be buying marijuana thinking that it's just marijuana and it's laced with fentanyl. So that's contributing to those particular overdose issues. In fact, I just read a kudos to one of our staff that did CPR on a gentleman in the bathroom at Safeway, overdosed after smoking a pill in the bathroom. So this is a daily occurrence.
Could you, question?
Yes.
For, you said nine, then I could not understand the words you were saying. It was nine what?
Nine overdose deaths.
Nine overdose deaths?
Yep.
And is that, that's from marijuana that people are getting from other sources than from state-run stores, correct?
Say it one more time.
Well.
So most of the overdoses are linked to fentanyl. We do have a breakdown and I'm happy to share it with council on some of the substances we're seeing, but overwhelmingly, it's fentanyl. Some of them are poly drugs, so fentanyl is mixed in with marijuana, methamphetamine and things like that.
Okay. And it was like not, well, I'll chat later.
Okay, okay. And I believe, I don't have the stats in front of me, but I believe we responded to 89 overdose calls last year and I think it was like 50 the year before. So just the calls for overdoses are going up and both police and fire go out on those calls.
Marilyn, you had a question as well?
I had the same question, I think, that Councilor Newton did regarding fentanyl and marijuana in a single source. Have those cases been traced to marijuana that was aftermarket, so to speak, rather than an established retail, legitimate retail marijuana business?
I'll have to go back and check, but I'm fairly sure the one case that I'm thinking of actually was out of Corvallis, that our narcotics task force happened to help with, it was black market marijuana.
Thank you.
So I have a question also. Is there data on the age distribution of the victims of the fentanyl overdoses or just 89 and then the death?
I don't have the average age for the overdoses total, but the deaths, I believe, was about 34 years old.
Thank you.
All right. Lack of mental health care. I recently read an article that Oregon ranks 50th in the nation for substance abuse care and 51st in the nation for lack of mental health care. That was one of the main drivers for us to create the Mental Health Intervention Specialist. That is one of our key accomplishments as well, is we added two very important community engagement positions, one of which is the Mental Health Intervention Specialist. We took and hired Kirsten Glaser, who worked at Lynn County Mental Health for decades and moved her over. She's an employee of the city of Albany. We used ARPA funds approved by council at the time and it seems she's pretty much already maxed out in that and we knew she would. Once she hit the ground running, she does the best that she can. But honestly, aside from our emergency departments and our jails, there is really no acute care out there for people. Trying to get somebody into the state hospital is very, very difficult right now. So it continues to drive public safety calls. I know it's a big driver of our police calls and as well as fire. So Kirsten and this position work heavily with the fire, community paramedic, with our library system and with our park system. In addition, we hired a park services officer, which is a co-funded position with the parks department, where that individual also has extensive training in crisis intervention because very likely she's going to come across our unhoused population and our mentally ill population that are present in our parks and has resources to be able to help them. But again, other than the acute treatment at the scene and triaging, trying to get everything under control, the options for citizens in Albany to get mental health care, particularly if they don't have the resources or funding to do it, is difficult.
Have you thought about maybe reaching out to the transportation folks as well? I know a lot of those bus drivers probably have same interactions.
As far as Kirsten supports all of the city. So the main driver, if, once we get to the three-year mark with the ARPA funding, we have enough funding to take care of that position for three years, I would look to try to keep that position in the city and co-fund that with other departments. But yeah, absolutely. Wherever the need is, she can go. She's just housed out of our office. And then some of the law changes we're dealing with, Senate Bill 48 passed. You've heard, council's heard from the sheriff and myself and the city manager and our municipal judge about this before. A well-intended jail reform bill was passed and because the way it's written made it very difficult for us to keep chronic offenders that are impacting people's sense of safety in jail. If, for instance, if you hit a police officer and I'm probably, I know this is a public meeting, but if you hit a police officer, you punch a police officer, they won't hold you in jail. If you burglarize your house and absent a previous conviction for that, they won't hold you in jail. So there's a point of frustration. It's not on the Lynn County Jail or the Benton County Jail, it's the way it is and we're trying to navigate these changes. So we're seeing people that would normally not be out of jail immediately released.
So I agree with that's, there's a little short-sighted or unintended consequences. So I know that, so habitual, people cannot be locked up?
So if they have, so they're arrested for a crime and they've been previously convicted for the crime, yes, they can be held. They have a warrant for that crime or they failed to appear on certain crimes, they can be held. But at the time, the jail has so much space and if they have a more violent offender in there, they may ask us to cite and release that person. If, once they enter the jail walls, they're mandated by certain things. So it's a very wonky way of doing things and we're still trying to navigate through it with both sheriffs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, as we know, the city's growing. You can see all the housing going on. Yes, sir?
You skipped, well, I would like to talk, you talked about Senate Bill 48. What about the impact of 114 and 110?
Well, 114, I was going to cover that in the budget process because that's the budget hit to us. For everybody, just for your understanding, ballot measure 110 is the decriminalization of user-level quantities of previously illicit drugs. So marijuana is already legal, so cocaine, methamphetamine, fentanyl and the like. And what that involves is that if they're contacted by a police officer, they have the option of making a call to a referral line and get assessed for treatment or take a $100 ticket. If they don't, if they get the $100 ticket and they don't go to court also to participate in that screening or they just don't pay it, period, nothing happens to them. They get sent to collections. I think that's a dangerous place to be with folks that are probably financially disadvantaged in the first place and then you're sending them to collections, but there's no repercussions for using illicit substances. I don't have the current statistics, but the calls to that hotline and those engaging in treatment is in the single digits of all the tickets that have been issued across the state. And the best way to describe that is, well-intended as measure 110 was, it's like, hey, putting up a good sign on your storefront, saying, hey, look at all these awesome things we have and then having nothing on the inside. There's, the money for those treatment options are just now rolling out. And I know that the city manager recently forwarded you some information on that. So we're seeing the backend of that absence of care for sure. It just opened drug use on the streets, particularly around some of our shelters.
Accountability is gone.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, back to budget again. As the city's growing, you see the growth, I'm sure our community development director, Matt Records, is going to tell you about the large amount of growth in the city. And growth can be a good thing, but it also comes at a price. We also know that the economy is struggling. Inflation is very high. We don't know what the next budget looks like. I do know that the Albany Police Department needs to grow. We've not added police officers in at least the last budget cycle. We've unfrozen positions, but we've not added positions. And for a city of approaching 60,000, 65 sworn officers is not that many, particularly with a rising crime rate. So it's going to be a challenge to try to navigate what that next budget looks like versus the growth in the city in trying to keep up with our calls for service. Some opportunities that we have are in technology. The more and more that we can automate our work, the better. We've already had discussions with the city manager and some of my department directors. Everybody knows that we do have a red light camera at Queen and Gary. Hopefully you have not been a recipient of paperwork from that camera. But one of the areas that we constantly, constantly battle and don't have the resources really to stay on top of is our speeding around our schools, particularly in areas around Queen, North Albany Road, Waverly, et cetera. So we're embarking on doing some research on automated photo enforcement in school zones. That will allow some sort of speed monitoring and enforcement in those areas without having to have a human being there. Now, it does require a human being to review those citations before they go out, but you don't have to have somebody dispersed through the city by doing that. So you may see me coming back to council to look at some work down the line in that regard, but there's a lot of opportunities when it comes to technology. The other thing, too, is in the fast-paced electronic world that we live in, is we would like our citizens the opportunity to be able to report crimes online. Right now, they can do it over the phone or they can do it in person. Now, my preference is they have the gold standard of a human being to talk to them when they have something happen in their house. But if they've just had their cell phone lost or stolen or a package stolen off their porch and there's nothing to follow up on as far as we're concerned, the ease of them able to report online. And that system is expensive, but the payoff is at the backend when we can do some online type of reporting. So there's some opportunities with technology. As you know, some of you have attended some of our events, we have lots of more opportunities to engage in public events throughout the city. We, it's a major accomplishment that we were engaged as much as we were. We had a good presence at the Juneteenth celebration. There's Mayor in the picture there, as well as we were invited to participate in and provided security for the Pride event in June. And then you see a picture there with the Lady Beavers basketball team where our staff provides event security on behalf of OSU. And then our shop with the cop events and Coffee with the Cop and that. So we are very much engaged with our community and have opportunity to do more. So I have a group that we meet with quarterly basis called the Diversity Advisory Team. Most of the ideas about Pride and Juneteenth came from that group and they work together about ways we can have open engagement and continue to build trust with our committee members. So the opportunity there is to do more. I think the more that our citizens get to know us, the more that they'll trust us to do our work. Again, this is the safety concerns. Here's the statistics I just showed you. They're not good. I would point to 2020, two numbers there and the use of Narcan, which is the far-left column. The number of overdose calls, which I think that is actually low because it could be titled something else, our overdose deaths at nine. And as you can see from fentanyl, that's by far the leading reason behind those overdoses. So we do track this pretty much on a weekly basis, so I can tell you at any given time where we're at. I pulled this last Friday, so you can see in the year 2023 where I've already hit four. I know there was two more since then. So there is, it's a continuing trend. The picture with the penny there, that is fentanyl, that small substance there, that is enough to kill a human being. That's how little it takes. Some of the stuff we're seeing, that pink substance, it looks kind of like Kool-Aid, that's how we're seeing it come across in various colors, clearly aimed at kids in some regards. Some of them look like candy. And then the picture in the middle there are some of the pills that come through and I don't know the exact count on those bags, but they can kill a significant amount of people. So this is something, if anybody asked me, what's your biggest threat, community safety threat, it's fentanyl by far. We're doing our best. We had a great discussion with the school district about making sure Narcan was available in schools, in the nurses' office and other locations. So it is definitely concerning.
I have a question. Are we seeing a lot of that in the schools or is it, is it increasing or is it going down?
We, the greater Albany Public Schools, not yet. I'm going to knock on some wood there. We do, we did, our narcotics team did respond to two high school age overdose deaths in the county. And we, our narcotics teams will go to any overdose dose death in the county and sometimes in Benton County because they don't have a team over there. But both the school district and ourselves fill its matter of time and we're trying to make sure that the Narcan's available within those schools. The other.
I have a question, sorry. Can you go back a slide? I have a question about your data.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure what I'm looking at here, the numbers under like heroin, fentanyl, meth, LSD, marijuana, those are calls or?
Calls are instances where we believe that substance is at play for an overdose. So if you add all those numbers together, they may not reach the total. There could be poly mix in there. So they, a lot of times we're seeing it mixed together. So they might be buying like Xanax.
Right.
And it's mixed in. So we might, you might see a mix in there or a lot of times we're seeing meth and fentanyl mixed in, so you could see those numbers overlapping. So you could see those numbers overlapping.
Okay, and then the Narcan is each time that your department has administered Narcan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's not even a fire. Shane, or the fire chief can probably talk to you about their usage. Usually we're present on both, on one call. Well, if there is an overdose, fire is almost always involved in that.
I have a quick question as well regarding fentanyl. You said it was geared and marketed towards children. I just wanted to know if we've seen that in our community or what can support that? Because I know that, you know, kids lack the cash usually to be good repeat customers, which I know drug dealers like, but I'm just wondering where that information is coming from.
Sure. We know that it's being used through Snapchat and some of the common social media platforms. And some of them are being disguised to look like candy. I haven't consumed some of the candy lately, but it's some of the multicolored candy that will come out. We're also seeing that powder form as well. But it will look like, almost like a candy to folks. And I know that they've been, public health authorities in various states have issued warnings about being careful of where the candy is coming from and making sure, if you're not sure where it's at, don't trust it. Our word to everybody is that if it didn't come from a pharmacy, don't trust it. So.
Have we seen that kind of candy, like the candy looking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've seen it here in the community.
With, do we know if like any children have had access to it or?
I don't know if they had access to it or not. I know that our detectives have seized or come across it in their cases.
Okay.
No, I'm running out of time. So again, one of the things that we're concerned about obviously is the rising crime. Doing our best to stay on top of that as much as we can, and then traffic issues. The picture there is a gentleman, yes, he was in a stolen car. And the fire department actually had to cut him, cut the roof off the car to get him out. And he was a very dangerous felon at the time. But we've seen a number of high-speed incidents. My main concern is around our schools. We constantly get threats or complaints from parents and that about crosswalk enforcement, speed enforcement, and the like. So those are the bigger traffic safety concerns and crime concerns that I have. And any other questions that you might have? That was a lot, I'm sorry. Wish I could go into a lot more depth, but there's, we have a lot going on. So and I'm available at any time if anybody has a question or follow-up question.
I think I'm good. Counselor? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. And the Chief didn't talk about how she has a position with the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area and Oregon Association of Chiefs and Police. She represents us very well. And I have to say how proud I am of the CLEIA certification. CLEIA stands for the Commission on the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. And if you get a chance to look up what that involves, I would recommend that. Okay, now I'm going to take a step back. I'm going to ask Gina Jaeger and September Ridgeway to come up, and they'll talk to you about the municipal court.
Thanks, Peter. So municipal court actually falls under the Finance Department, which is kind of an unusual situation. Although, oh, my name's spelled wrong, anyway. So I asked September to be here with me because she is the one who's the court supervisor. She is the one who can answer your questions the best about what happens in the courtroom. So municipal court consists of, I'm the director. I'm in charge of the administrative part of it, time sheets, things that happen here at the city. Judge Reed is in charge of actually running the court and also directing September and the other clerks in the, in the work that they do every day. So September is our court supervisor. And then we have Jalisa Pineda, who is the senior clerk. And then we have one full-time clerk and two part-time clerks. And that's something that we're going to talk about a little bit later. We are a little understaffed. And as Chief Harndon talked about, all the new concerns that they have and some of the different rules and regulations that are affecting police, that kind of translates into issues for municipal court also. So some of our accomplishments that we've had is improved efficiencies. COVID actually did us a favor. It made us look at other ways of doing things. So we can hold virtual courts now. We created a violations bureau where the clerk can actually look at people who have traffic tickets. And if it's a first-time offense, they can reduce that without that person having to go before the judge. We also went with online and phone payment systems that have greatly improved the way that people can pay their, their fines and fees. During this time, too, we also contracted with a public defender. So now the city has one public defender that we work with, and that's worked out really well. If you have any questions about that, September can answer those for you. But it's just been incredible in the, the way it's been working out for us. We should have done that a long time ago. I'm really glad that we did when we did.
So it's just one person, or there's?
We have one person who's our public defender. Now, if there's a conflict of interest of some sort, we do have somebody else who can step in.
Okay.
But we haven't had that happen.
I think we've only had to use the other attorney one time in the last year, so.
Thank you.
Right. And then also the mental health court. We're continuing that, and it's been really successful. It gives people an opportunity to get the help that they need and not have to go to jail. And, you know, working with the new mental health person that police has is a very good way for us to utilize resources and, and help people.
How many folks in the last, in the last byhand went through that process? The mental health process?
That's going to be on one of our statistics coming up, okay? Okay, I'm going to let September talk about the different statistics that we have here.
Okay, so the, this is just the total number of the different types of cases that we've had filed in the past several years. And I don't, did we include the prior years to this as well? No. It's, in 2020, it went down quite a bit from 2019 just because of COVID and the police weren't issuing as many tickets then. I think the decrease in 2021 and 2022 is because of the lack of police officers that we've had. So we just haven't seen as many cases, at least traffic cases. I think the criminal cases, which require more work and more of our time, and those have held pretty steady. But I think. So this is the number of warrants that we issue. Prior to COVID, we would issue the bench warrants, which are the fail to appear and fail to comply. Those were bail warrants where the officers that arrested the people were required to take them to the jail, and they were required to be held and to be released. They would have to post a certain amount of bail. Because we don't have room at the jail for our defendants any longer, we just have to cite and release them. So that's why there's such a big difference. And if you compared it to 2019, it's a lot different. But so that's why there's so many site warrants now, because that is the only option that we have at this time. Also, we used to issue a warrant on every single case that somebody had. And at, now, since COVID and the lack of jail space, we've started just issuing warrants on one of their cases. So this number would be far greater if we did every single case. So it's not really giving you the whole picture of what we're dealing with. And it still takes the same amount of work, and we're still dealing with all those other cases. It's just dispatch, and the officers don't have to deal with all of those warrants. But we're, they still have to see those people over and over and over again because we don't have a jail to.
Once you get someone into court on the one warrant, do you deal with all of the pending cases at the same time?
Yeah.
There's no accountability.
No.
So what? Failed to appear, big deal. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We feel the same way.
Sorry about that, September.
This is our revenue over the last three years. When we were shut down in 2020 because of COVID, and that gave us a lot of time to catch up on some of the files that were really past due. So I think that's why there was an increase in 2020. And then 2021, we saw a lot of people with the, like, COVID relief, the stimulus checks, they would come in and pay their, pay their balances off. So I think that's why there was such an increase in 2021. I mean, I think we're still collecting as much as we can. We've also started offering a lot more. Judge Reed is offering a lot more work crew for people that can't afford to pay. So we've seen a huge increase in that, which is, I think, is the next slide here. So yeah, you can see that that's really jumped up. And that's a good opportunity for the people that can't pay. They can do work crew instead, and that's available to anyone that wants to do it. So.
I have a question regarding, I know that it was in December, then Governor Kate Brown did, she had like an executive order where she forgave, what was it, like 70,000 unpaid traffic fines. How is our court system dealing with this? And has, is it going to like, I would just love to know how we're dealing with this.
Yeah, so we're still in discussion about what we should do with Sean Kidd, the city attorney, and our judge, Forrest Reed. So they haven't quite decided how we would go forward with that. But I compiled a list of all of our cases, and it would be about $50,000 that we'd have to write off.
Thanks.
Mental Health Court. So this is, I believe we started in June of 2020. So this is just an overall, I don't really have a good way to break it down because they kind of cross over years. So we've had a total of 67 participants. 12 are active in the program right now. 41 have successfully completed the program, which means all of their criminal cases got dismissed, and they are doing much better. They've found housing. A lot of them have found jobs. And it's really cool to get to see the success stories that come out of Mental Health Court. I think it's been a really good program.
I don't necessarily know what the Mental Health Court is. I'm inferring some things from what you're saying. Can you give me like a broad overview of what that is?
Yeah, so we work pretty closely with Lynn County Mental Health. They had a person that also works with APD. So we all work really closely together about certain individuals that need mental health help. And it's not for everyone. There's a lot that drug use is an issue, too. And those ones aren't always great for the program just because it's hard to get them off of the drugs before the mental health help. But for the ones that it does work for, we have Lynn County Mental Health present. We have a public defender assigned to them. And they have to attend all of our, their court sessions that are scheduled. They have to comply with whatever Lynn County Mental Health thinks is appropriate for them. So if they have like therapy appointments that they need to go to, or if they have medication that they need to take, they have to follow Lynn County Mental Health directed, direction. As long as they are in good standing with that and they show up to all their court appearances after a certain amount of time, sometimes it can be as short as six months. Sometimes it's like a year. It just depends on how they're doing with Lynn County Mental Health. And we really depend on Lynn County Mental Health to tell us when they think it's an appropriate time to release the person from the program. So once they finish it successfully, all of their pending criminal charges with us are dismissed. And so they get to start with a fresh slate. If they fail to comply with any of that, then they are removed from the program and they just start over in the regular process.
You have a question?
Yeah.
How long is the program? Is it 30 days, 60 days, is it?
It just depends on how they're doing.
Okay.
So there's been some that are as short as six months. But then there's some people that need a little bit more assistance. So it might be a year, 18 months. Yeah.
So can I say one thing before? If you get a chance, find out when the next session is and go sit in. I think it'd be an eye-opening experience. I did sit in one session, and I learned a lot in Judge Reed, and I had a one-to-one and kind of talked about the process. So I think it'd be for, as a counselor, that it may be a good, an eye-opening experience for you. So if you had a chance, please participate.
We have one tomorrow at 10:00 AM.
You're killing me there, September. Thank you.
So September and I would also like to talk about some of the challenges that we're seeing. As we mentioned, there's a lot more cases. And even though there's a fewer number of warrants or a fewer number of traffic violations, things still get touched multiple times. And so there is a lot of work for them. Before the pandemic, we had a total of 5.125, I think, FTE in there. And then the pandemic hit, and we had somebody who left. And so when we went into the next, and we didn't really need them as much because things were a little bit slower, we were still able to handle things, we were still able to. And when I say we, I mean the court staff because they're doing all that work. But now we're down a full FTE, and it's making it really hard to get things done timely. We would like to improve our customer service by opening our window for longer hours. Right now, they're open in the afternoon. We'd love it to be open all day Thursday, all day Friday for people to come in and, and be able to ask questions, pay their bills if they, if they need to come into person to do that. Non-compliance, you know, with some of these state laws and mandates that are going into place, it's really difficult to do anything about people who are non-complying or in non-compliance with either their payment program. One of the things that September didn't mention earlier, we have work crew, but we also offer payment arrangements for people. So if they can't pay their fees and fines right away and work crew doesn't work for them, we do offer payment plans for them. People don't pay those, then really, we've had a lot of our options taken away from us. We can no longer suspend driver's license for non-payment. That was the recent law that went into place. And then Kate Brown, you know, kind of made it retroactive and not only undid the suspension of driver's license, but also remitted the fines that were associated with those in that category that, that she was forgiving. Yeah, we don't have a lot of options anymore. There were a lot of times, when September was showing the revenues for '20 and '21, a lot of the reasons we saw people come in with their stimulus money was to get their driver's licenses unsuspended. So that was really a way to kind of get people's attention. You know, we, we do offer other payment methods for them. So it wasn't a case of we're being unfair. They could have done a work crew, they could have gone into a payment plan. But these new rules and regulations have just hurt us with, with that. September can kind of talk about what the process is if you're interested. But it's, it's still one of our challenges. And then the lack of jail space also contributes to that, too. We can't hold people. We can't, we don't, we don't really have a lot of recourse when people don't follow the rules all the time. So, September, did you want to talk about that anymore?
I think you've covered it pretty well.
Okay.
So can we impound their cars?
Pardon?
Can we impound their cars? So if they, we can't take their licensing for not, we cannot impound their cars?
I think that would violate the spirit of her order because, you know, the whole point was that people could have their license so that they could go and get their basic needs met or to go to work. And so if we impounded a car, they wouldn't have a vehicle to drive.
I have a quick question. Do you know if people, like what, if there's any data on people that are still driving if their license is suspended? Do you know like a percentage rate? And does this just mean that they're unable to be insured? And so...
Yeah, that's a question. I'm an insurance agent. That's a great question.
I think one of the most issued traffic citation or the citations that we see the most are for driving while suspended and driving uninsured. And if they are suspended, they have to have an SR22, which costs a lot more money than regular insurance. And they have to provide that to the DMV and they have to get it renewed. It's not cheap. And I think that's a lot of, well, and a lot of them do have various fines and various courts. So I think it's just, once you get into that hole, it's hard to get out.
Do you know the average cost that maybe someone in our court system would have to pay in order to have their license in good standing once it's been suspended?
So the driving while suspended violation is a Class A violation, which has a presumptive fine of $440, which is a lot of money. Driving uninsured is a Class B violation. That's a presumptive fine of $265. So I mean, right there, you're looking at...
$700, roughly.
And then I don't know what an SR22, what those rates run. But and then in order to get unsuspended from the DMV, you have to pay them a $75 reinstatement fee. So it adds up. I mean, I'm sure you're looking close to $1,000 if you just have one citation. So it's not easy for some people.
That's one of the reasons I don't sell auto insurance anymore. I'm done with it. Thank you. Counsel, any more questions?
Is the one contracted public defender enough?
Right now, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, it's good. We only have two sessions a month with him now, which is really nice because before we had four with the different attorneys. But he's able to handle all the cases and move through them pretty quickly, so.
What a great improvement.
It is, yeah. It's a lot more efficient.
So when you say you have staffing challenges, that's mostly on the admin side?
Right.
Is, do we, do we have any resourcing from IT at all for pulling any data for the court system?
I don't know that there's any, I mean, we've made a lot of efficiencies. We just got a new program and that's made a lot of things better for us. I don't know that there's really much else that IT could do to make things more efficient.
Thank you. Thank you so much, September, Gina.
Thank you.
Director. City manager?
I think we're on the schedule for a break. And since we have our PowerPoint expert up next, Chief Wooten, he might want to take a break before we see all those slides.
Let's go into adjourned for a break. 15 minutes, please.
An accident, aviation safety investigation.
Let's just go.
Root causes, causal contributing factors. Oftentimes, there's way more than just one.
One minute. Actually, actually. Right. This is Police Department. Yeah, it was like a... Yeah. We're all grown up. We're growing up. Right. Good evening again. Thank you for reconvening. Next on tonight's agenda is our fire chief, Shane Wooten. And start the clock on 45 minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay, I got a rough crowd tonight, it looks like. So my name is Shane Wooten. If we haven't met, for some people... For some people in the audience or watching virtually, I'm the Fire Chief of Albany Fire Department. And I'd like to start, if I could, by introducing my team that's here. So here we have Deputy Chief Chris Labelle, Deputy Chief Kyle Romi, Business Manager Rachel Bottommiller. We have our Training Chief Scott Cowan and our Fire Marshal Laura Radcliffe. So Counsel, as you get going and engaging with your constituents and questions arise, sometimes I'll do my best to answer them. But oftentimes, they're really the subject matter experts that you likely may hear from. So now you can put a face with the name. Okay, so if there was, if the directors of the city were like a high school senior class, I probably would be voted the most likely to talk longer than their allotted time. So I'm gonna do my very best. I know I'm going to move rapidly through the slides. Please, if you have a question, ask. But part of my purpose and my time here is I'd like to be able to equip you to answer some questions that maybe your constituents may have for you. So it's really basic Albany Fire Department. Counselor, probably 101 class, maybe a 201 class, since you're in education. Okay, so first and foremost, who are we and our values? We prioritize the health, the welfare of ourselves and others. We're customer-based, we're honest, have integrity, strive to be a diverse organization and operate with professionalism and teamwork. I just want to highlight the department's values. Because really, who we are is equally as important as what we do. Okay, so this slide you see, I'm gonna come back to it periodically. And it's our organizational chart, it's really small. Hopefully, you're able to see some of it on your screens in front of you. But I'll keep coming back to this. So first off, in 2019, the Fire Department had ninety-two point six FTE. And then this last biennium, we have eighty-four point six FTE. So that's gonna come back a little later on when I show you a slide about the call volume that's happened. In the last biennial process, thankfully, the council then passed a fee that allowed us to retain firefighter positions. But we did lose a total of five positions in the last biennial budget. Three were layoffs and two were through attrition. As the positions became vacant, we held them open.
Even with the city services fee, you still had to lay off five people?
Well, we laid off three, we laid off the Deputy Fire Marshal and we laid off two single role employees. And then we also held a Deputy Fire Marshal, another Deputy Fire Marshal position open and the Training Lieutenant position. But again, thank you very much, though, because your decision then allowed us to keep the same number of fire trucks and ambulances on the road. So the bulk of our department is in this little corner of our org chart. Eighty-six percent of all of our FTE are first responders. So nearly all of our budget goes towards the people who are delivering service to you, that when you call nine-one-one, they're going to show up. Rest of the department, or rest of the org chart I have with that second circle, those are just individual positions. So even though the bulk of our organization, it looks expansive, really, those are just one people or one person doing a specific function. Okay, so maps and boundaries. Okay, so we, as Albany Fire Department, we provide fire protection as well as the ambulance service, not only to the city of Albany, but also the areas around us. So specific to fire protection, eighty-four square miles, we contract as a department, as a city, with the city of Millersburg as well as three other fire districts that are surrounding the city of Albany. And they all pay the city of Albany for our service. So, you know, when it comes to checks and balances in a department, I always like to tell people that where, you know, not only, you know, am I reportable to City Manager Troodsen and to you, the City Council and the Public Safety Commission, I'm also accountable to three elected fire boards as well as the city of Millersburg. So we do lots of presentations about the department and reporting out. Our EMS, our ambulance service, we're responsible for two-hundred-and-five square miles in Lynn County and in Benton County. So we provide the ambulance for not only Albany, but Millersburg, Tangent, Shed and Halsey. Not for the ambulance service, the ambulance service is a fee-based service. So we transport patients from their communities and then they receive a bill for our service.
And then they pay you.
And they pay us, yep. I'll get to another slide where we bring in annually just under four million dollars a year in ambulance revenue. Okay, so first responders. Talking about this area here. Okay, so our, all of our first responders are EMTs, Emergency Medical Technicians. Eight out of ten are paramedics, which is the highest level of certification that you can get. Our first responders, and this is kind of interesting, if you've ever had a tour of a fire station, this is true, really, from coast to coast. They work a twenty-four hour shift and get forty-eight hours off. So they work a day, get two days off. So they live at the fire station the entire twenty-four hour period, you know, as they're going out on calls. So if you've ever had a tour of a fire station, it's set up like a house where there's a dorm room, there's a kitchen, a living room, an office. Interestingly, though, with firefighters, they work fifty-six hours a week, but they're not eligible for overtime, like most employees, over forty hours. So there's a, there's an exemption in federal law that'll, that because of firefighters typically working a shift schedule, allows them to work beyond forty hours and not get overtime.
Do they get a shift differential, like at HP when I worked the weekend nights, I got weekend bonus additional and then night additional?
Nope, nope, because they're working morning, day and night, so it's pretty equal. The only thing, maybe there's a little bit of disparity is, and this is really into the weeds, but sometimes there's one shift because of leap year that has to work more holidays than the other. So they're always vocal about that, but no, there's not. All our people are quick-thinking, work as a team and have an empathetic heart. Empathy was mentioned earlier by Chief Hardin, and I just want to echo that for us, that it is so important, and actually, you heard me when I talked to the new firefighters, swearing them in the other night, that we don't make widgets, we deliver a service to people. And we always have to remember that and hire people that are good at that. Okay, so this is kind of a complicated item, but it's important for me to tell you because as we move forward, or if you have questions about our budget, this helps frame our operations. And that's the concept of minimum staffing. So right now, between all of our stations, there is a minimum of twenty-one firefighters working to staff the stations. Our max that we have assigned per shift is twenty-four, but people have to take vacation. And according to our contract, only three people can be off at a time. So, you know, unlike maybe some of your places of work where, you know, you can, maybe it might be easier to take vacation, for them, it's a competitive process to be able to take a day off, because only three are allowed off at a time. So, um, let me just get these up there. So that is an important item, because when we drop below twenty-one people working on a given day or shift, we have to bring somebody in on overtime to fill that spot. Otherwise, we would take a fire truck out of service or an ambulance out of service. And that is, you know, the last thing that we want to do. A couple items that guide this are the American Heart Association, for every minute without life-saving CPR and defibrillation, chances of survival decrease by ten percent. And also NFPA seventeen-ten, that is the guideline, the national standard, that guides some of our staffing decisions. You have a little bit of information there that is in the slide. This is a really busy slide, you can come back to it later, I would assume that you'll get copies of this. But this is just an illustration of an apartment fire, a building that we have more and more of in Albany, how many firefighters it takes and their functions on the fire ground to be able to safely perform a rescue, to extinguish the fire. And you might be wondering, okay, so it's twenty-eight there, you don't have twenty-eight people working on any given time. Well, we have extensive mutual aid agreements and auto aid agreements with the departments around us. So the fire service is collaborative. So on any given day, you will see a Carvalis medic unit or Lebanon medic unit in Albany.
I've seen them, yeah.
And likewise, you will see, you potentially would see an Albany medic unit in Lebanon and Carvalis. Or you might see them, we have a fire board member who writes a blog in town who just asked me, because one of his readers saw a Carvalis ambulance parked at Independence Highway and Highway twenty. And thankfully, since he's on the fire board, he was able to answer the question. But we're constantly moving equipment between the departments to try to have people ready to go when you call nine-one-one-one if our resources are exhausted in town, which happens multiple times every day. No one community can staff and support for everything that potentially could happen. So we really do lean on each other in the emergency response realm. All right, so this is, when we give tours of the station, we ask people for fun, how many stations does the Albany Fire Department have? And funny enough, we get all sorts of different answers. So we have, well, this is, kind of gets tricky, we have five stations, four of which are owned and operated by the city of Albany. One station is operated, well, it's operated by us, Albany Fire Department, but the station is built by the city of Millersburg as well as most of the staff is funded by the city of Millersburg. Actually, I'm gonna do this real quick. One of the number-one questions we get on tours is why are your stations numbered eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen? You said you only have five stations. Okay, so we are a part of, we are dispatched by Lynn County Sheriff's Office. We have a contract with them, so when you call nine-one-one, dispatcher picks up the phone, nine-one-one, what's your emergency? If you say it's a fire call, you live in Albany, they then dispatch us on the call. But they also dispatch and contract with Lebanon, Sweet Home, Halsey, Harrisburg, all Lynn County Fire Departments. So we really get some economies of scale there by contracting with them. So Albany, we're the one-hundred series, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Sweet Home is the two-hundred series, Station twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Lebanon, three-hundred series, thirty-one, thirty-two, and you get the drift from there. Okay, so our five stations, I'm gonna do a quick walk-around. Station eleven, there's a total of four emergency response people there, one Battalion Chief, and then three people assigned to a fire truck. There's one fire truck that responds out of that station. Also, you probably figured, it also houses all of our administrative staff. Station twelve on Thirty-Fourth Avenue, that has a total of five people at it. Three people on a fire truck, two people on an ambulance, you'll hear that theme. It's also the home to our training grounds, we do our training behind the station, as well as it's home to the bus barn. And you'll hear Director Bailey and us talk about, as a goal, of removing the bus barns so we can use that area more for our training grounds. Station thirteen on Three Lakes Road, people often forget about this station because it's really kind of, it's nestled off the beaten path a little bit, and that's out behind Home Depot, five people at that station. It's also the home to where we do our maintenance for our facilities. We contract with Hughes Fire Equipment to do maintenance on our fire trucks as well as other fire apparatus in this geographic area, and they lease the building from us. Station fourteen on Gibson Hill Road, that has four people. This is kind of a unique way we operate, where depending on the type of the call, that station is either two ambulances, which it is most of the time, or one fire truck. And then lastly, Station fifteen, that is the one that is owned and primarily paid for, operationally for, or by the city of Millersburg. And there's a total of three people there, just a fire truck. Okay, so we're an all hazards fire department. So we get phone calls for, I mean, you name it. We generally try to respond to it. People ask about cat in the trees, we get that, that phone call frequently. You know, we, maybe afterwards, I'll share a kind of a funny story of trying to rescue a cat. We will do our best within calls, because we're extremely busy to go make contact with somebody. But, but by and large, it's actually pretty dangerous for our firefighters to be doing some of that work. And, but we do go out and try to connect with the, with the community member and try to help them navigate it, and if we think we safely can do it, I'll talk about this later, we try to start from yes. And, and so, anyway, so we do go out on this.
And so you folks are fully trained, if anything happened out at ATI or NETL?
Oh, yes, we part, we have a really good partnership with all our industries in town. Specifically, I'll call out NETL, whereby their, I'm not sure exactly if it's a federal statute or what, but we have to train with them annually. And in our industries, you know, when they call and ask us to participate, we do our very best to try to get people there to help them, to run through some sort of drill or scenario. We can't always do it, sometimes we just don't have the people, the time. But we do, again, try to start from yes when we get that phone call. Okay, so then our ambulances, so eighty-six percent of what we do is EMS-related, is people calling nine-one-one for an ambulance. We work under a physician in Carvalis who actually authorizes us to do the treatments that we do. We've come a long ways from when I was on the line, as far as the treatments that we do. These are mobile emergency rooms. We carry all sorts of life-saving medications. We carry, well, the same medications that are given to patients in an operating room that paralyze you to allow the surgery to happen. We carry those same medications and administer those when the situation's right. We, pain medications, ventilators. We're doing twelve lead EKGs, making diagnose, or making the determination whether or not we think you're best treated at Albany General or you need some higher level of care. And we're doing, our paramedics are doing that all out in the field with diagnostic equipment. If you got any questions, please.
So can you, Counsel, do you know what fire med is?
What percentage of our budget or revenue comes from EMS services? Is it also eighty-six percent?
Okay, so out of the entire department's budget, which I'll get to a slide in a little bit, we're about nineteen million dollars per year to run all five stations and the ambulance service. We actually bring in right around a third of that nineteen million dollars in revenue. Four million of it being, close to four million of it being an ambulance revenue and then the remaining from the rural contracts that we have. So we're in a unique spot, you know, unlike our, our partners in blue, where, you know, we're able to go out and generate revenue by expanding our services to bring monies into the city. Okay, next question, this gets asked a lot, why does a fire truck go with an ambulance? Super small print, you don't have to read it, or, but this is a picture, an illustration of somebody in cardiac arrest and then all the first responders it takes to treat that patient. So if you think about the Buffalo Bills player that just recently went into cardiac arrest, it wasn't just two people that were, that were treating him out on the scene, out on the field, there was a whole host of people. Well, the same is true with what we do. The other piece is, we measure our service by getting to you as quickly as possible. Well, sometimes that means there's a fire truck closer to you than an ambulance. Well, we want to get that fire truck to you as quickly as possible. We want somebody there starting to treat whatever your problem, medical condition is. We also have special teams, these are Fire Department members who have, like, received extra training and, you know, I like to think in our department, or not think. you know, I like to think in our department, or not think, I know, in our department, knowledge is not centered in our department, it's distributed throughout. We encourage people when we hire them to find your passion and become an expert in it, and then teach us about it. And these are a couple, these are four of the larger groups that we have. But honestly, if somebody came to us with any sort of creative idea that would make our department better, and it's something that they're interested in, and they want to learn more about, we're going to try to encourage them to do that. It just, it just makes us better. All right, so now we're going to talk about Chief Ratcliffe's division, our fire marshal. So there's three people in that division. And we're going to just talk briefly about some of the amazing things they do. And some of you maybe have had contact with Sandy Roberts. She is our public forward person, risk reduction, or deputy fire marshal, risk reduction is her position. But she's really, really engaged. So we do fire code inspections, commercial plans reviews. So when you approve, you know, maybe a large industry coming into a town, that Chief Ratcliffe gets a chance to look at those plans and provide input on how's the water supply for that area? Can fire trucks get around? We do fire investigations, youth fire center interventions. Sometimes children, for a whole host of different reasons, use fire as a way of experimenting or expressing themselves. And Sandy and a few other people in our department are experts in, in that, and are able to sit down with the child and try to get to maybe, well, to try to provide them some, some education. Urban, or wildland urban interface outreach, this is, since 2020, has become more of a focal point for our community than it has in previous years. And then just lots and lots of public outreach. All right. And then also within this small group, and this is an area where the first responders augment, but we do school presentations, firefighter friendly. We teach every eighth grader in Albany 8J, we teach them CPR. We do injury prevention class for fifth graders. We do a safety camp, fire extinguisher training. Again, if, if somebody has an idea and we think we can do it within our bandwidth, we try to do it. We start from yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead, my VCS.
Do you guys have like a citizens academy, like the APD?
We don't. So we've made two runs at a citizens academy. We were able to successfully fill one. And then we're like, all right, that worked out well. So we did it again, but we didn't have a quorum to be able to do one. But we love the idea. We love telling people about what we do. And, and so we would love to be able to do that. And it's probably been a couple of years since, since we've tried. Maybe it might be time to dust it off, and we could see if things change. I mean, the world changes. So, you know, maybe people's interest might have as well.
Could you tell me more about the firefighter friendly program? And then also, as someone that has been working on a fire plan for my family, I will tell you that my seven-year-old is terrified of putting out a safety ladder out her, because she's, we're on the, she's on the second floor. If that's something we could ever do, like with schools as well, like, hey, here's how you would use a fire safety ladder. I'm, I'm like this close, just to putting like a reinforced lattice on like the side of our house, just in case. But, you know.
Okay.
That's something as well. Because I know, reality, a lot of children do live, do sleep in, you know, upstairs.
Oh, mine did as well, yeah. So, okay, specifically with your situation, afterwards, let's connect. Sandy Roberts is pretty darn good, and maybe she could be able to help you on some strategies that she's seen that works better. And then to your other question about firefighter friendly, what that is, that is, we get into kindergarten classes, and we have a firefighter, Sandy's facilitating it, and, and explaining to the children what's happening. And we have a firefighter put on their gear, so the child can see what we look like with all our, all our gear on, with the idea of them not being afraid when they see us. It's a program that, that we have done for decades, and it's successful, and we keep it going. Yep.
That's awesome. And then I was wondering if you know of any programs. So I mentioned the ladder issue to some friends at my daughter's elementary school, and they're like, oh, we don't have ladders. And some are like, oh, well, how expensive are they? And I'm wondering, is there a grant program, or is there a program to connect families, maybe can't afford safety ladders, with, with a safety ladder in their home?
You must have the slides in front of you.
Oh, do I.
Next slide I'll go to. So, yeah, we have access to grants that maybe the, the average citizen doesn't. So here's just a small list of some of the items that we have at Station 11, where, honestly, I mean, if people come and ask for them, we don't, we don't vet people necessarily. You know, we maybe, sometimes we might feel like we're being slightly taken advantage of, but ultimately, our mission is prevent and protect from harm, and we're able to leverage grant dollars for this, so we give out the equipment. But we have key boxes, that's for elderly folks who maybe have a life alert, and they're, and they live alone. They're worried about falling, and then us showing up and not being able to get into their house. There's secure boxes mounted to the house that they can put their house key in. Medication boxes, carbon monoxide alarms, smoke alarms, grab bars, bike helmets, car seat program, life jackets at all of our stations. And it's not listed in here, but we do have, we do have a little cache of ladders as well, that we have in our room that we give out. So, yeah, if, if you know somebody in one of those Zoom groups that needs something like that, connect them with us. And, you know, if we don't have it, we'll try to find somebody that does. I mean, this is core to our mission. Okay, so going back to the org chart, our community paramedic, this might be something a lot of people don't realize that we have this position. This position started probably about five years ago, that we received through a grant through one of the coordinated care organizations, local coordinated care organizations. And it is one person who, Hillary Cosmiki is her name, her job is to go out and try to help people access healthcare in an affordable manner, rather than calling 911. She also is our liaison with the houseless shelters, as well as the assisted living facilities. And in fiscal year, she had 300, or fiscal year 2022, she had 347 referrals. So our crews frequently will get out in a situation where they'll, I'll just give you kind of a standard example, of maybe elderly person, elderly couple, family lives out of state, they don't have a lot of friends or people to check in on them locally, and something happens and they call 911, and we end up going to their house. And they get into the house, and they see something like this. Okay, so I told you, we hire people with empathetic hearts. So when you, you know, just, I've seen people's head nods. When you, when you see that, you know that you just can't walk away from that, that, that they need help. More so, or more than just their medical problem. So Hillary is able to be that point person, to go out, to make contact with them, to reach out to their family members, or to plug them into a, a local group that can help them navigate the situation of life that they're in. So really, a really super good program. For a 200-level class, I probably shouldn't have used the word super good, but anyway.
So that's just one person doing all that?
That's one person.
Okay.
Yep.
And what was Hillary's last name?
Cosmiki.
K O.
K O S M I C K I.
I was thinking, I was thinking C O first, so.
One other, other question. When that, when that position was created, that was grant-funded, is that correct? What's the funding for it now?
It's us.
Okay.
Yep.
She's part of, she's full-time?
She's full-time, yep. Yeah, we saw, she, yeah, no, we, we, we need, we need the position. Okay, our training division, one person, here's an example of just some of the required training our firefighters are supposed to have. Actually, I'll leave it there. And, and then you could see that, as far as our fire staff this past fiscal year, our people have had almost 8,000 hours of training, and then almost 1,000 hours of EMT training. People are constantly out practicing. And you might see us around town drilling.
Have you run into any instances where the new technology in auto manufacturing has made it difficult to get the vehicles opened from an accident with extraction tools that we currently have?
Yeah, getting vehicles open, for the most part, we're able to do. Where the changes has hap, have happened is with some of the struts and the doors can be essentially kind of explosive, as well as with more and more electric vehicles.
Those.
You know, there are, there are wires in places that we have to be mindful not to, not to cut, where on the, you know, cars from when I was younger, you could just tear them apart, and, and not really have any concerns about that.
So with that.
Yeah.
I'm really concerned about the, the battery component of these bigger vehicles, the newer vehicles. Explosive, explosive hazmat, right? One hazmat and explosivity, or is that the right word? Detonation is. And then any toxic fumes coming out of those batteries. So are we garbed, are we geared up for that when we deal with EV?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah. So, you know, our people are trained, Chief Cowan behind me, he's the one who's responsible for that. They are trained to be able to do that. We outfit all, all our people in the proper PPE, they have breathing apparatus if needed, and they also have just regular filters that they can put on, if there is a concern for that.
Okay, thank you. So also, once that event happens, do we, do we clean up that hazardous material, or someone else is contracted to do that?
Yeah. So when it comes to a car accident, we, we will help pick up the remnants of a car accident, but it's a responsibility generally, and Chief Hardin probably could, better to answer this, but the tow companies do that, and that's their responsibility to sweep up. We'll go out there, though, if there are, you know, fluids that are potentially could leak into the waterways, and we'll use absorbent to, to pick those up, as well as then we'll notify our public works department in case any of those potentially could get into the storm drains.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so city, we, in the fire department, even though it's a city position, the city's emergency managers are with us, you're going to be hearing from him, I think in the next couple council meetings, he's going to do a little rules and responsibilities of the city council in a disaster. But I'll quickly go through this, he's responding, or he'll talk about mitigation, preparedness before the incident, the city's response to the incident, the recovery after, and then prevention. What can we do to make sure it doesn't happen again, and better equip ourselves? Okay, so as far as fire departments go, there is this company out there, private company, insurance service, insurance service office, they go around and measure fire departments. And then they take that information, and they can sell it to insurance companies that determine what your rate should be when you buy fire insurance. So they come in every five to 10 years to judge our department and score us. They look at our deployment, our staffing, our training, our risk reduction program. So are we getting out in the schools? Are we reviewing plans? They look at our equipment, they look at the city's water supply, just what city manager Trodson mentioned earlier about that symbiotic relationship. And then they also look at our dispatch services. And if you look at this chart, this is a chart of fire departments from around the country, and you'll see that there's few that are Class 1 or Class 2, that's the best. And Class 10 is usually departments that, you know, people live in an area that's remote. Albany's rated at a Class 2 department. So we're in the top 5% of fire departments nationwide, as far as ISO ratings. So we were last evaluated in 2018, so we're probably getting close for them to come visit us again. And it's a two to three day process where they go through our records and sit down and ask questions. It's a good checks and balance for us to make sure that we're doing the right things. Okay, response information. Okay, so here's a chart of the number of total responses for the last 10 years. And you can see the direction that this chart is going. In the last 10 years, we've seen a 77% increase in calls. And most all those, that increase is EMS related. So the demands on our ambulance service are higher than ever. If you're kind of curious, I think it's worth pointing out, if you could see my mouse, we have a downturn in 2020. That was COVID. That was when we were, when everybody was in their homes, people were less active. And we saw a dip, probably for about three or four months, where our call volume declined. Likewise, it doesn't really illustrate it in, in this, but if you were to dive deeper, one of these big increases, we had in 2021, we, when the Delta variant was going, we set records as far as number of calls that we were going out on. We were going out on probably five, six COVID patients a day, that the condition had progressed far enough that, that they had to call 911. So we're, we're still on an upward.
Dejected, right?
Upward slope. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. But I'm about ready to prove everybody on my director's right, so I need to move a little quicker. So fiscal year 22, time of call, really, the peak of our calls happen in a window between nine in the morning and nine at night. So in the budget process, we're going to be asking, hopefully, as we work through the process, to use some federal funds that we receive, to be able to add an additional ambulance during that time, during that peak time. Day of the week, it's pretty equal distribution. Types of calls you may be interested in. So the most fre, this is a top 25. There's probably about 50 or 60 different incident types that when you call 911, our dispatchers could dispatch us on. Sick person is the most frequent call. That's kind of a, somebody calls 911, hey, I don't feel well, or they're non, they have a nondescript complaint. A lot of COVID patients kind of fit into that category. Falls, breathing problems, lystocys. People often ask, ask about that. A lystocys is just what you see there. It's when somebody's fallen in their home, they don't have anybody else to call. And so like I said, I mean, nobody knows who to call, they call us. And then we go, and, and honestly, sometimes it's just lifting the person up and checking in on them. And, and we did that, you know, 750 times.
And when people would think about a fire department going out on fires, you have less than 200.
Yeah.
All of those calls are actual fires.
So over my 30-plus years, the actual number of fires continue to decline as building codes improve, as, you know, there's advancements in engineering, the materials that now our buildings are made of, most are fire resistant. So the number of calls has declined. The risk is still there, though. But the fire service as a whole has kind of re, redone themselves to where, you know, we're filling other voids in the community that otherwise wouldn't be filled.
What's the demographics? Have you, can you map the demographics, you know, five years old to 90 years old? Kind of show where these, so I see the lystocys would probably be heavily over, you know, senior population, assisted living communities, independent communities, and things like that. But some of these breathing problems, heart problems will probably be middle-aged, and cardiac arrest, so.
So I can't tell you that. I don't have that number off the top of my head. But what I can tell you is 80% of our calls are to people who are of, or who are of Medicare age or Medicaid. So a majority of our, of our calls are from that population in our community. And, and I'll get to this later, but I'll just say it now, that so, you know, when the city, as we grow and we add an assisted living facility in town, our general rule is, for every bed in an assisted living facility, that's going to generate one call per year. So if you approve a 400, a 400-bed facility at Bonaventure, that is going to translate into about 400 more calls per year for. into about 400 more calls per year for us, you know? And during some of those increases, significant increases that you saw, Bonaventure goes into, or opens, Waverly Place opens. So, you know, those in an apartment complexes where there's high density number of people, those generate, there's lots of humans there and those generate calls. So I don't have that number, but I can't tell 80% are Medicare, Medicaid.
Thank you.
Takes a seven, on average, seven minutes, 10 seconds from the time you call 911 and a dispatcher picks up the phone till we get somebody on scene. This is a slide that I reference a lot, but people will ask me, hey, chief, I heard a bunch of sirens yesterday afternoon, there must have been a big fire. It's like, no. So sometimes that's the case, but most often it's what this matrix is in front of you. And this is concurrent incidents. This is the count of the number of times there's one incident happening at a time, at a moment in time, two incidents, three incidents. So simply put, you know, like eight, you could see there, there were two times in this last fiscal year where we had two, or we had eight active calls happening in town at once. And if you're curious, on December 23rd, on the ice storm, next year's chart will show 11, that at one point we had 11 active calls. We had, we had people waiting, waiting for us to respond. Our budget, alluded to this earlier, that we are $39 million over the biennium and we have three different budgets that we're responsible for, but 83% of what we do goes to personnel costs. The bulk of our business, we're in the people business. Here's a chart showing what I had mentioned earlier about the revenue that we bring in to the community, or to the city of Albany through the ambulance revenue as well as through the rural fire districts. But on a positive note, even though the rural fire districts, they are, they do generate calls, you could look at it and say they're 14% of, of our budget, but they only really are 8% of the total number of responses that we go out on.
For ambulance fees, you're mentioning that we contract out for other areas, correct?
For the fire side, we contract out with other areas. For the ambulance side, it's not a contract. This is going to get really technical, but the health authority breaks up the state into ambulance service areas and then the counties, the county commissioners, they, they codify, create ordinances of who's responsible for the different geographic areas. So we by statute are, have an ambulance service area because we provide the ambulance service for this area. But we get ambulance revenue from those people. So we do generate revenue from going out of our district.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And that's at a higher rate usually, correct?
Pardon me?
Is that usually at a higher rate for the ambulance services?
It's the same rate for ambulance service. The difference though is part of our ambulance schedule is mileage. So, you know, if you lived in Halsey and, and, you know, you're getting charged for 30 road miles at, you know, I think it's like $16 an hour, or a mile versus somebody in town who's generally only a mile or two from the hospital.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Chief, what proportion of the budget comes from fire med fees? How do they?
Fire med fees is only like around $150,000.
Okay.
Fire med really isn't a for profit piece of what we do. We try to keep the 70, we try to keep the price of fire med the same until it starts losing money and then we'll come to you to counsel and ask to generally like increase it $5, $10 to keep it, to keep it afloat.
Thank you.
See, the last, the last, the last time we did was $5 from 65 to 70. That was what, 19 or 20?
It was right when I became chief, so probably 19.
19, okay.
It's a bargain.
It's worth it. I pass it out to every one of my clients that comes in my office.
So I'm going to skip this side, conflagrations. That's something that we can talk about, talk about later, but due to time, we'll move on and the fact that everybody's going to be right and I was wrong. But you're asking questions, so.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, good, all right. So we have two nonprofits associated with us. That is the Albany Firefighters Community Assistance Fund, money generated by firefighters. We have cash in all of our apparatus that if we see a need to be able to help somebody, we access those monies and, and do fundraisers to come up with it. We also have the Albany Safety Foundation. They are a group of private business people in town who want to get more AEDs in our community. They raise funds to do that. Some accomplishments we've had over the last year, we're improving our communications infrastructure through some ARPA dollars through the state. We had a grand opening of Station 15. I'm happy to report that we reached a fiscally responsible four-year agreement with our bargaining unit. Had a record demand for services. We purchased new ventilators using some city of Albany ARPA funds. The ventilators we had at the time weren't able to be used on COVID patients. They didn't generate enough pressure to be able, to be used on them. So we were able to purchase new ventilators. Like other city departments, we've had a reduction, knock on wood, of number of on-the-job injuries. And then we've also received two grants. We've received what's called a SAFER grant. We're in the process of hiring three more firefighters that are paid for by the federal government for three years at 100%. And then we also received a grant to help us purchase a new fire truck. That fire truck's been ordered, we won't get it till the spring of 2024, but, but nonetheless, if we can bring federal dollars into our community, that's a, it's a good thing for us. Okay, so immediate challenges. So we need to add capacity, which I've talked about, ambulance capacity. We need to improve our recruiting process. And all three of these, actually, I believe as chief are intertwined. We, in the past, sometimes, well, we have an excellent recruiting process, but things are so, in the past, but things are so competitive right now in the job market that we probably need to make some changes to move quicker and get people from, from the point that they're applying to the point that we bring them on. Some of that is inherent to the work that we do. But we'll, you know, we work with HR on this, they do a great job and they, like us, are always looking at ways to shorten up processes. We also have kind of focused our recruitment more local based than casting a big broad net like we have in the past, because that ties into employee retention. You, counselor, I think, asked about retention rates. In the last two years, we've lost 10% of our firefighters to other departments. Nearly all of them are to the metro area. The departments up there generally pay more, they work less, work fewer hours and have fewer responsibilities. So, and then, you know, imagine yourself being 25 years old, you work for Albany Fire Department and then, but you live in Portland because they work 24 hours on, 48 hours off, you can kind of live wherever. And so it's really, there's a lot of mobility in the workforce as it relates to firefighters. And right now, what we're seeing is the trend north, that departments like Carvalis, Lebanon, Albany, we're, we're losing a lot of people. But with that being said, we need to, even though inherently we're behind the eight ball, we still need to be doing things to make Albany attract, an attractive place to work and retain people, because it costs upwards of $10,000 to get somebody ready to go. And, you know, when we lose somebody after a year, it's just, you know, not a good thing.
I have a question. I was going to ask, what are you, what are you doing to make Albany attractive, to have them come and retain them? You can obviously get them, but it's an issue with keeping them, right?
Yeah, so one of the things we're trying to do right now, that if you talk to any of the firefighters, it'd be adding capacity, adding another ambulance. Like with all of our jobs, you know, sometimes when you are being pulled in 20 different directions and you're feeling overwhelmed and then maybe an opportunity shows up for you, maybe not to have that demand so much put on you, it becomes more attractive than, than you, than otherwise might be. The culture of our department, we're always cognizant of what our culture is. I would, you know, hope that you would go ask any of our people that, and actually sometimes we're, we're maybe criticized for being too supportive, if, if that is such a thing, that, you know, we want people to want to work for Albany Fire Department and we make decisions based on that. So, you know, we have similar, what Chief Hardin has talked about, we also have a wellness program, we have a peer support team and we've been doing that for a while. But right now, our big issue is when people live in Portland and we hire them and then they quickly go, go back after a couple of years.
I will tell you, I had the opportunity on Saturday to have dinner with several firefighters from Tuolotin and your reputation speaks volumes to a lot of folks. One of the people in particular said, Chief Wooden's a treasure, that he's very supportive and that they think that Albany Fire is a great place. So I'll let you know.
You'll have to let me know who that is.
I will, I will tell you.
Six pack of beer to them.
I will, I will tell you, yeah.
All right. So also as chief, it's my responsibility to tell city manager Trozen and all of you what I see as issues in the future. Stable funding for all of us, that's just a constant theme that you'll hear from all the directors. Staffing, matching the city's growth and probably in the future, looking at adding an east side station as you work through the East Albany Development Plan. At some point, you know, there will be a need for a fire station out there, as I'm sure Chief Hardin would talk about, there'll be need for more police officers or maybe for some sort of outpost out there. Reducing risk, additional staff in our fire and life safety area, administrative staff, we have the same management team size as we did in 1999 and also our training division. And you can see there's some capital items that are in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. And, you know, I feel like for some of these, every time we make steps forward, like, it's like two steps forward, three steps back, seems to be kind of the mantra on this, where we start identifying funding sources, but then we have to reallocate those funding sources to another need. Okay, so I'll just go ahead and say this, extremely plugged into the community, couple pictures here, we have the 9/11 ceremony, bottom left, we participate in the young women's firefighter academy to try to draw more young women into the service. You could see some other examples of where we plug in. And lastly, I'll say this, when I became chief three and a half years ago, I said that anytime I did a public facing presentation, I would end with the slide of our people because they are absolutely the number one resource we have. They're amazing and even though I was on the line for a long time, I sometimes watch them do their work and am amazed at, at what they do. So we're thankful for them. Questions?
I will tell you this, since there's no questions right now, you know, most of my clients are over 65 years old and the ones that you guys, the, the team, your team has helped with a lystasis or responded to them, they speak highly of you to me all the time, you know, because they know I'm the mayor and they come, mayor, let me tell you about this firefighter and, and it's really nice when they, they talk about what you guys do and how well you do your job. So we, I do appreciate it 100% and I have my full support.
Thank you very much. I will say to all of you, as you work with your constituents, we hire from the human race, right? So we're, we're not perfect. So if you, customer constituent calls you, has an issue, we want to hear about that and we want to follow up with them to keep that reputation up.
And young folks are interested as well. I visit the high schools and how do I become a fire department? So I actually bring up the website and show them the website for the fire department, the city, the different departments. And it's really nice when they, they want to talk to city leaders. I know one person reached out to, to city manager, had lunch with him. So it's, it's a community that really respects you guys and appreciates the work you do.
Thank you. And for the record, you all pass Albany Fire Department 201.
Chief Wooden went over the conflagration slide, but he may have included in there if he had gone over that, but he also serves as Lynn County Fire Chief. So when it comes that time of season, when they're brokering resources in this area, this is the guy that helps to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's office and it's not a department. It is a tiny little staff. We have a, a small staff, as I said, all of whom help with enterprise-wide functions. And I'm going to ask Allison Lees to come up here and start us off. One of the city manager's offices functions is to provide support to counselors. So I think all of you know that small staff very well by now. But the, we also house, you heard the fire chief talk about emergency management as a function and also code enforcement as a function is in the city manager's office, even though the people who conduct emergency management and code enforcement are respectively in the fire department and the police department, those are citywide functions. So we have budget responsibility for them. So we'll start with our city clerk, Allison Lees. And public records requests, agenda management and distribution, parliamentary advice and council, notary public services. I'll let Allison run through these couple of slides with you.
Hello, council. I'm not used to seeing you from this angle. Am I at the right angle to the microphone?
You look fine.
A little closer? Okay, oh, here. There we go. The microphone will come to me. So yes, city clerk's office, we're a small work group within the small city manager's office. There's two of us, Gabe and me. We work closely with and coordinate with all the rest of the city manager team. We all have different functions in a lot of the larger tasks that we do, so we all talk to each other frequently. The city clerk focuses on compliance with the law, consistency of process and connection to information. Under compliance, the clerk is charged with making sure city meetings comply with Oregon's Open Meetings Law as well as with best meeting practices, which is very often Robert's roles. We respond to public records requests in compliance with Oregon's laws that specify deadlines for responses as well as which records may or may not be released. There's an awful lot of law surrounding public records requests. We comply with Oregon's election laws and our city code when we're electing new counselors or putting measures before the voters. And we apply our knowledge of our charter and municipal code to make sure that city meetings, elections and records practices comply with our own ordinances. Consistency, one of the best ways to ensure compliance is to be consistent in our processes. The clerks are constantly evaluating and updating our written policies and process documents for all of our areas of responsibility. We have update dates on all of our process documents and just about every time I open one of those documents, I check the date and think, do I need to go back and look at this again? We also do training and education for administrative employees in city departments. We distribute our process sheets, document templates and information and we're always available to answer questions, always. Consistency across the organization means increased efficiency and reduced liability. So our employees spend less time figuring out how to do things and we reduce our chances of making process errors. And connection, connection to information, we spend a lot of time connecting people with information, starting with the council. We make sure you get your information that you need to hold your meetings and make your decisions. And of course, we have a lot of help on that because it's the departments who submit the information to us and we just put it together into a format that, that you're able to access easily. We answer questions from the public and we get some doozies and we coordinate records requests to multiple departments. We consult with employees about meeting management and records management. When they have questions, they call us and that's the way we like it, because we'd rather get the right answers out there. We make sure the council has the information they need. I already spoke about that. I jumped my list a little bit here. So the, oh, that's right, Matt changed my slides. It looked different. The 21 to 2023 biennium has really been all about change. In two years, we've had 100% turnover in personnel because two years ago, it was Mary as the clerk and me as the deputy clerk. And here I am sitting here as the clerk and we have a deputy clerk who was new to the city and to clerking nine months ago, 10 months ago. So our shift has included shifting task assignments with other, other departments and also training in a new deputy. When COVID hit, we had to pivot, pivot really. When COVID hit, we had to pivot, pivot really fast from in-person meetings to a whole new process for virtual meetings. And then a few months later, we made the shift back to in-person meetings with new processes to integrate the virtual attendance and testimony techniques that we learned during COVID and that are now mandated by state law. So it was two complete pivots in two years in meetings process. And through it all, we reached out to assist and support other employees who are facing the same challenges with the citizen advisory groups. It wasn't just us on the front lines, they were all dealing with it. COVID also accelerated the shift from paper-based to electronic agenda production. Not so many years ago, we were printing and distributing 12 to 15 copies of each agenda packet, including the ones with 300 pages. Now we assemble computer documents and email them to you and all the other recipients, saving of course, time, money and resources. And teaching the city clerk some new tricks along the way. Oh, that's not me. Oh, he combined them. Okay, that's what it was. All right. Change is consistent. And the 2023 to 25 biennium is going to have its own challenges for the clerk, as well as for everybody else. Electronic records formats and storage options are proliferating faster than ever. This is a difficult thing for someone particularly who was, who was not born digital and I tend to think of records as having a location. They don't have locations necessarily anymore. And that's, physical locations for sure, and that's, that's a hard visualization for me. Fortunately, we're bringing on new people who got that and are going to take us forward. In the next few years, we're going to have to be quick and flexible in figuring out safe and accessible ways to store those new formats. And we'll need to develop new skills and knowledge and those skills are going to lean more towards the kind of skills associated with IT and less towards file clerk type skills. Also in the next few years, 50% of us are planning to retire. Before then, we need to download the institutional knowledge that the city needs to keep and we also need to absorb date-forward knowledge and practices to take the City Clerk's Office into the future. And that's slide five, right there. Okay. All these tech things are just, my goodness, combining slides. I thought I was doing pretty well because I actually wrote out a couple of slides. This is my first adventure into serious PowerPoint slides. Okay. So goals. In keeping with our focus on compliance, consistency, consistency and connection, we've chosen three major goals for biennium 2023 and 25. I say major because we have a lot more than three goals we want to accomplish in the next couple of years. These three are big and they stand out. First, we want to move records into ORS compliant archives. We have some going in very slowly. We've had the technology for several years and now we finally have the staff time and the tech skills we need to accomplish it. It's a huge task to make that transfer and to make it keeping the records safe and organized so you can find them again. And I think we're able to tackle that now. Our second major goal is to create a policy and procedures manual to document consistent, effective and defensible practices. And that will help us to move forward as well with shifts in personnel. And third, we want to continue to build relationships. As part of the CMO team, our task is administration and support for all departments and building and maintaining the relationships is how we get things done. The clerk has fingers in a lot of city processes, but the clerk does not have the authority to set those processes or to require that any part of it get done. So we need to have really good relationships with the key people that we work with in the department, as well as out of the city. We're the, what people sometimes see of the city when they make a records request or call the clerk with a question. And we have to be very conscious all of the time that that may be their only contact point with the city for years and we want to make sure that we start building that relationship. Anybody have questions? Eventually. I'd love to retire in the next couple, three years, about the time I hit Medicare age. And we'll see, kind of depends on the way the economy goes the next few years. Thank you all.
Thank you, Allison.
Well, I hope the ship can continue to sail.
It will.
Once I leave. No, I haven't left yet and we have, we have really capable people coming up. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. So our hiding in the booth is our communications and engagement officer, Matt Harrington. And as you know well, he helps to make contact with our public, our external partners and with our workforce internal. He manages our social media outlets, serves as a resource for inquiries from the public and from the media, and is constantly looking for ways to generate interest and communicate the importance of citizen involvement in their local government. So Matt, I'll turn it over to you for the next one.
All right, great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep this brief. I know there's a lot of information to absorb in a relatively small time period. The following summary is by no means an exhaustive list of all the things that I do on a daily basis, or you heard about some of the other staff citywide that also have communications and engagement as part of their role with the city. But, and this is also some of the challenges and opportunities that I see coming up citywide in the next few years. So I think this distills it down into three main areas, the first being community and building effective partnerships and using the right tools and be, just being there to listen, I think are some fundamental steps that we can take as a city. So in, in terms of increased participation and collaboration with other community groups and nonprofits and even our volunteers with the city, you know, some of the organizations that we've already built relationships with or are looking to foster better relationships with, our LBCC, our Chamber of Commerce Business Extravaganza, Farmer's Market, we occasionally will do booths there. GAPS, especially with the upcoming Mayor, If I Were Mayor contest from Oregon Mayors Association, I'll have to plug that at least five times during this talk. Albany Pride, we've had a, a presence there the past few years. High School Career Days, increasing our youth engagement and also, like I said earlier, improving our volunteer recognition efforts because tho, those people really are kind of an unsung labor force that we can access through the city. And we need to appreciate them. So. One of the ways that we collaborate and share with the wider community is I'm involved in this group called the Lynn Benton PIOs Group, and that is about 40 individuals from other cities, counties, state. We have representatives from ODOT, OSP, OEM, throwing all kinds of acronyms out there for a later point. But it gives us a chance, oh, and sorry, school districts and Samaritan Health as well. It gives us a chance to collaboratively share information and we're actually working on some training that we can leverage our, our collective resources to better train all the PIO folks in the, in the region. So that's been very, very important. We continually assess and adjust our use of, of all media, including social media, different platforms, direct mail, email marketing, always looking for what is most effective for the particular audience and the particular message. And there's not a one-size-fits-all to that, but being adaptable and being flexible in our, our usage of those tools. One of those items is our website. We often do get a lot of positive comments about the, the quality and the breadth of information on our website. But I don't know if you're familiar with the Winchester House of Mystery down near the Bay Area, but like the Winchester House of Mystery, our website is never finished. And if you know about, if you don't know, go look it up. But it is a continual process of making sure that information is a source, accurate, or sorry, of accurate information and timely. So it's always kind of the foundation that we rely on, looping back with a lot of our usage of other media. And I will say that we are, we are proud that our website currently meets the Level A rating of accessibility. We know we have room to grow in that arena, but it's a pretty good place to start. So. We continue to schedule regular community conversations events throughout the community in different locations. Part of being, kind of leading into the next point about accessibility is taking a really good look at the dates, times, locations that we hold those events. Not everyone can attend at certain times. And then of course, the, as Allison said earlier, the, the resource of having remote as a possibility or hybrid meetings as a, as a possibility has really opened up the options for people to attend. So accessibility create opportunities and improve processes for everyone who wants, for everyone who won, everyone who wants to engage to do so. And again, that's a process of continuous improvement, some things that, some recent examples of things that we've done, or even something as simple as examining the, the main phone lines phone tree and reducing the total number of options because we found that almost no one clicked through to the second set of options. So let's evaluate what's most popular and tune that accordingly. Transit, not to take away Director Bailey's thunder, because I don't know if she was going to highlight this later on, but she can reiterate it, I guess. Transit just, I believe you guys heard about the IVR system that they're launching. So alternative ways for folks to access information, IVR international, interactive voice recognition. So for folks, I believe it's for call ride that want to schedule a ride, they'll be able to interact that way. Recently launched a projects map on our website for Public Works. It gives a comprehensive view of work being done both by the city and by private developers. That's like site improvements in the city. So just kind of moving then toward the point about transparency, providing that information to folks so that they can learn more about the city, the services that we provide. And also branding documents, templates, even like this process for tonight and tomorrow night, we're starting to take a really hard look at the documents that we put out as a city. That kind of leads me into the transparency and sort of the, they all kind of blend into one. But considering things like colorblindness, screen reader accessibility, alt text and, and really then transitioning into talking about plain language initiative. I know Counselor Smith, when she was at the city, it, it's a big initiative and one that we think is very important that we want to tackle. Plain language, yeah, plain, so if you don't know, plain.
Plain language.
Plain language.
Say it in, in full syllabus.
It means that we should be saying things that people can understand the first time through. It means getting rid of a lot of jargon and acronyms and.
Hard for me to sit still through this. This is.
Sorry.
Wonderful to hear.
Moving more toward information that's user-centered, active voice, and just a lot simpler for the average community member to understand. And that has real benefits when we start talking about making our materials translated because it's easier to translate it, something that is already simple than to try and translate something that's in English that's incredibly complicated. So. And then finally, I'll just wrap up with as far as transparency, you know, we have a, a number of dashboards. Some of them have been hidden for a while because with Jorge Salinas's departure, we kind of put those on pause, but we're looking to bring those back. Key performance indicators for the strategic plan so that we can monitor those goals and objectives that were set out in that document. We have the Socrata Open Finance Dashboard that has now relaunched. And also just kind of our basic, where do my property taxes go calculator, which has been updated to the most recent tax year. So it's always a handy tool for constituents to see, you know, out of their assessed value, how much is actually going to the city of Albany and then those various departments as well.
Matt, I always enjoyed reading the, what they call the Caffer and the Paffer. And I hope that those will be able to come back sometime too, because that gives high level, low, middle level. Into the weeds type thing.
We, we actually are looking to hopefully in this next year, or probably year, do an annual report, which will satisfy the, the Paffer requirement. It'll, it'll be similar to what you've seen in the past, but provide a, a pretty basic overview of city operations. So, and that's all I had. Any questions?
You get a chance to sit down with Matt. He does a lot of great work with social media and you'll see normally it's, he's responding to City of Albany when those posts come up. And he's really helped me with the If I Were the Mayor contest because the participation is ridiculous. I'm, I'm going to schools every day for the next two weeks because kids are excited about participating. South Shore Elementary, second grade classes creating their own contest because they felt slighted because I, it's fourth and fifth grade is what starts at. So more and more kids and young people are getting involved with that process and, and asking questions about the city and partly because of the work that you do. So thank you.
And thank you. I know some of our newer councilors all have Facebook profiles and, and have been sharing our stuff. So thank you for that.
The cookie plug was nice.
Quick question. And you had, and I meant to ask this and you were talking, so I was just waiting. When the community conversations happen, are they normally just downtown or do you try to have them all over? Because I've been seeing they're normally look like they're downtown. If there's a way we can get them in other regions of the community.
We actually held one last year on the east side of town at Cascade Grill. Traditionally, we've tried to have them in a place that has like food and drink.
Sadiqi's on the south side.
Yeah. Oh yes, we had one at Sadiqi's on the south side before as well. Those venues are, are sort of hard to come by. So if you have ideas.
It'd be fun at the Costco Food Court. I'm just saying, I can't be the only one that really loves.
Next, next to the mustard pump.
Me, you know? They just redid it.
Yeah. No, we're, we're, that is our intention is to move them around town. And again, like I said, explore opportunities. They don't all have to be in the evening. Of course, you know, that puts a, a greater load on staff who typically also attend to answer questions, but.
But the, but the first one we did, we had at seven o'clock in the morning and you can guess somebody showed up.
I was there.
I'm not suggesting that by any means. I'm just saying, you know, like if there's community conversations, maybe people can bring their chairs and come to the park and just talk and hear. I mean, I know you want to have food and drink, but sometimes people need to just kind of do that brown bag lunch thing, lunch and learn type of thing.
We actually, we're going to have one at Grand Prairie Park this last summer, but it didn't happen. So.
We've, we've had them at North Albany, at The Barn, at Sadiqi's on the south side, at Deluxe Brewery, at the. at Deluxe Brewery, at the community center, at the Cascade Grill.
The library.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt. I was hoping we could catch up on Chief Wooton, but alas, no. Okay. So the next slide is, talks a little bit about legal support. Our city attorney is not with us this evening. I'll cover for him. Our city attorney, Sean Kidd, serves us under contract. His office provides advice and counsel to counselors and staff. He serves as our prosecutor in municipal court. He manages our litigation efforts, whether in civil court or in the land use board of appeals. And he keeps us aware of the impacts of legislation. The city attorney's services are used really by every department, literally every department. As a reminder, he is the council's attorney, not, not the attorney for individual counselors or individual staff. He is the city councils and the city's attorney. And next month, on February 20th, Sean will be providing you with a litigation update. Okay, Mary's here with us, but I'm going to cover her slide real quick, get us back on track. Since she assumed her current role, Mary's done her best to shepherd our strategic planning efforts. And those of you who were on the council last year saw that, saw it play out. She has had the assistance of Sarah Singer Wilson, a consultant who specializes in helping cities with these efforts. As you know, the city's strategic planning efforts have evolved and you've been there participating in that effort. The current strategic plan was adopted by the council in September of last year, and we've developed a regular schedule for review and update. The intent is to strengthen the linkages between the plan and the budget and to develop a system, as you heard from Matt, as he alluded to, for reporting on progress made toward achieving strategic plan objectives. So any, any questions on that or anything else in the city manager's office? Okay. Then I'll ask.
Deputy.
Yes. Well, we can, I was going to talk about a deputy at the end of the.
Okay, I'll wait.
Presentation, but we can talk about it anytime you like. I'll ask Holly to come forward and take over the iPad for HR.
We got our contracts done. I'm happy about that. So it's a good thing.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Polly Roten. I'm your HR director. This January, I've been with the City of Albany for 15 years and I've served as the HR director since September of 2021. Well, get through here. There's a delay. Okay. So Human Resources Mission, we are dedicated to maximizing the potential of our greatest asset, our employees. You will have heard both chiefs and the finance director, and you'll hear from every director over the next, tonight and tomorrow, about the costs associated with personnel. And certainly when we talk about our greatest asset and what we're able to accomplish, it's certainly our employees. Everything we do requires employees, but also asset in terms of cost. All right, there's a delay. Our vision statement is to be innovative partners fostering highly effective teams. Our values include integrity, service oriented, effective communication, modeling leadership, and quality service. We have, as the city clerk mentioned, we have more than these four goals, but they fit nicely all under these four umbrellas. And where the bulk of our focus is placed is in workforce development, hiring, educating, and training individuals for the modern workplace, workforce flexibility and leave. While this has been a focus for the city for many years, it has been highlighted over the last several years during the pandemic and certainly now in a post COVID world. You'll hear work-life balance touted as the primary focus for most employees now. It certainly, it, it, I think caused people to take pause in their lives and reevaluate their priorities and work where people used to live to work, now they work to live. And our employees are certainly in that camp, just like with most employers. We employ very dedicated individuals, but certainly they want their jobs to produce something for them beyond just an obligation to show up at a certain time and place. They want that sense of service and accomplishment and certainly work-life balance is part of that. Workplace equity, fostering healthy workplace culture. You heard both chiefs talk about that. Pay equity policy. Oregon has a pay equity law that we are legally required to comply with, but also ensuring that any policies we have are equitable and we're equitable in our decision-making. And workplace, workplace health care, which we think of medical healthcare typically when we hear that, and that's certainly a huge component of it, but also care for our employees on the mental health side, financial health. You heard Chief Harndon talk about that, making sure they have access to those resources and, and that our policies are centered around that. So in Albany, we have what's called a full service, or sometimes you'll hear the term full cycle, Human Resources Department. These are some of the core functions and we do have responsibilities that fall outside of this list, but these are the big, big ticket items. And what's meant by full cycle is we are with our staff from the time that they're a prospective employee, they're applying for a job with the City of Albany, to recruitment and selection, onboarding, and all the way through to offboarding, whether that's retirement or they're just moving on to another opportunity. And everything that happens in between, we are with those employees and we have a touch point with them. So that includes our classification and compensation systems, our benefits design, employee development, training, our citywide learning program. And on the tail end of that would be performance management. We have policy development and implementation, which really just bleeds into everything we do. We're a government, so we like policies. We have compliance reporting and risk management. The compliance aspect is actually a significant part of what we do. A lot of what human resources is involved in is regulatory and making sure that we're complying with federal, state, and state law. Employee and labor relations is, they're really two different things, employee relations and labor relations, but they tend to be lumped together. Labor relations is collective bargaining, managing the relationships with our unions, resolving any issues that may come up through the grievance process, and administration of our labor contracts. The employee relations side is any issues that may came up, may come up specific to the employee. So that could be ADA requests for accommodation, Title VII compliance, but there is certainly a link between those two. And a significant aspect of what we should be doing, and we're, we're chipping away at as we can, is workforce and succession planning. We've not had the staffing to put significant effort into this area over the last two years, but with a recent addition to HR staff, this is somewhere we'll be placing greater focus. And I'll touch on some turnover threats that we have in the future related to retirement and you'll understand why workforce and succession planning is so important to us. So who we are, we are a pretty small but mighty team. We have full, six full-time staff members who support about 450 employees. That number does surge up in the summer as we hire summer staff, mostly largely in our Parks and Recs department. I have at one senior level position filled by Melissa Humphries. She's been here for almost 25 years, more than 30 years in public sector HR. Highly qualified. She recently promoted into that position and she's going to be helping me with a lot of that workforce and succession planning, reviewing all of our policies, making sure that we're in compliance and a lot of that senior level work. She will be joining me at the table here at meetings. You'll see her come forward when we come to talk to you about labor issues or compensation issues. And we have two programs coordinators. They're that sort of mid-level generalist position where they handle a lot of the day-to-day for our staff, recruitment, benefits, leave administration, just your general HR functions. And two HR assistants, one who just started in January and one who started last June. So we're just now getting to a place where we have healthy staffing levels. So how we serve, this is, I talked about those four goals and the little icons just indicate how a certain core function serves to meet our goals. Recruitment administration, obviously, a big portion of that is workforce development and workforce, workplace equity. Our workforce development, you might think happens on the, the backend after we've hired somebody, but really recruitment and administration, excuse me, recruitment and selection is just a, as significant a part of our workforce development as what happens after they're hired. It's making, helping our departments make informed decisions about who they're bringing into that workforce in the first place. And making sure that they're committed to public service, making sure that they're, they know the job that they're coming into. And that speaks to what our communications and engagement officer was talking about in how are we advertising these jobs to our community and to prospective employees. And our benefits and leave administration fits very nicely into those goals as well. You'll notice in green there, we've got paid family medical leave insurance, which is new for us and will represent a significant workload increase as we start to implement that program. Big aspect of what we do is risk management. We have, workers' compensation was talked about quite a bit by both chiefs. And I have a, information for you on that, Mayor, your question about the insurance piece, I'll make sure I touch on. We are managing that through our insurance provider, SAFE, but we are doing the claims management with the employee or that touch point. And certainly we have assistance from our, his title eludes me, Chuck Perino, our emergency manager, safety officer, who will be coming to present to you. He does provide some assistance to HR related to our safety programs. He doesn't handle drug and alcohol testing, but he does handle our safety committees and the required training that's needed for them. And he also helps me keep track of OSHA requirements that we need to comply with. So on the heels of the fires in 2020, we had new smoke AQI and heat safety rules that we needed to comply with. That's a perfect example of where Chuck and I would tag team that and make sure we have policies in, in place and training and we're getting that information rolled out to the Classification and compensation is a significant aspect of what we do. Everything starts with the job description. Every job has to have a robust job description that goes with it because that drives the classification and compensation system. So we're doing job analysis as needed. We are determining the FLA status, FLSA, excuse me. We are conducting salary and benefits surveys. Typically, those are done as part of labor negotiations or we might do large surveys. I will come to you generally and with information mid-year related to non-bargaining, cost-of-living adjustment surveys, things like that. Something that has been backburnered because of our staffing limitations is an equal pay study required under the Equal Pay Act and recommended to be done every three years. The Equal Pay Act was adopted in 2019, so it is overdue. It is an area of exposure for us and we know that we need to get working on that. We just simply have not had the capacity to do it. So that is on our to-do list for this coming year, or for this year now. And salary administration is a, a major component of what we do as well. We have four labor contracts that we manage and then we also have non-bargaining executives and temporary staff. Those are all individual salary schedules and compensation systems that we manage. We have staff dedicated to all of our employee records. As I mentioned, we have typically about 450 employees at any given time on our payroll. And each one of those employees generates a lot of paperwork and a lot of records, pay records, medical records. We handle employment verifications for them. If we have someone who's looking to get a loan, their loan agent contacts us to make sure that their employment information is valid. So there's a lot of administrative work behind that. Performance management, we, the departments individually handle performance management from a day-to-day perspective. We provide coaching on performance management issues. If there's a performance improvement plan that needs to be implemented for an employee who's maybe not meeting expectations, we're there behind the scenes helping that supervisor. We're obviously developing policy behind that and doing the collective bargaining with the unions and making sure that our evaluations are getting done timely. There's a compensation piece tied to that. So making sure that employees are receiving their step advancements in a timely fashion. And labor relations is, as I mentioned, collective bargaining largely. We just negotiated all four of our labor contracts this last year. For those counselors who were on the dais, you'll recall the workload and the uplift associated with doing all four of our contracts at once. And certainly doing those in a time when we had a pretty rocky financial picture with the economy and the inflation at nine plus percent. That was challenging, but I'm really proud of the work that the team did, the various teams, and we were able to pull that off. The asterisks there, I just want to note, we have the four bargaining units. Three of them, I'll just provide an explanation, are strike prohibited. And that is based on the fact that they are not able to go on strike, so we end up in binding interest arbitration. So your transit operators, your police officers, and your firefighters cannot go on strike. Your general unit, which is all of our other departments, our engineering, operations, our library, municipal court, planning, utility billing, the list goes on, those general service employees are strike permitted. And so there's a different bargaining process that we go through. And as we, as you're on the dais longer and we get into the, the meat and potatoes of that, if you're here for the next contract, then we'll have fun talking about all of those details, but I'll spare you tonight. Training and development is an area where we've sort of had to put things on pause, but we're excited to get going again. Our departments, especially our larger departments, do a fantastic job with their training programs, but there are certain aspects that are HR's responsibility, things like anti-harassment ethics. They do meet the, the requirements. That's not to suggest that our employees aren't getting those trainings, but we want to do things that are more robust. And we want to put a greater emphasis on long-term development for our employees and giving them skills in leadership, giving them those skills to promote. Or not necessarily promote if that's not of interest to them, but to move into that next phase of their career should they desire. And we do work with local partners. You'll have heard directors mention a lot about local partners. We're not immune to that at all. We leverage LVC's Leadership Academies. We send typically a dozen or so employees to those each session, and there's one in the spring and one in the fall. We have a really good track record of sending our employees through that training. And then we utilize our partners at city county insurance services for a lot of our regulatory type trainings. And they have dedicated staff members. It's part of the fees that we pay to CIS, so they're free trainings to us, which is an absolutely fantastic resource.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
In reference to the training, are there any DEI or IDISJ trainings in here? I don't see anything about that, and especially regarding the internal training.
Yes, so we have not had the staffing to do anything in the last 15 months, but that is on our list for 2023 to get that back up and running, along with Supervisor 101 to make sure that our supervisors are getting all of the basics related to FEMLA, OFLA, ADA, all of your regulatory compliance matters, workers' comp. We've had that gap because we lost our senior staff member in September 2021. When I started, we lost two employees like that. And so we've just been treading water. But yes, that is definitely on our radar. So I am, Matt Harrington mentioned key performance indicators. And when I was going through the slides from two years ago when we did this presentation, we had a nice lovely slide on KPIs. And I started to do that and then realized I don't have those metrics for you for the last two years since we haven't been doing the KPIs for the strategic plan. But I am a data person, so I personally am really excited that we're getting back to that and I look forward to bringing you KPIs soon. Also, I can just share. Also, I can just share anecdotally that they would have been really impressive charts because our, our numbers are way up there. So major accomplishments, you know, I'm really proud of the HR staff and what they've been able to accomplish over the last year plus. This is really, truly just a snapshot. This doesn't even begin to touch on the number of things they've, they've done that maybe wouldn't rise to this level. But as I mentioned, we did negotiate successful bargaining agreements with all four bargaining units, which I went back and looked, is the first time we've done that since the early 2000s. It's very uncommon. We did successfully hire two new staff members and that restores our staffing levels to 2010. We had six FTE. We handled a number of very complex and time-consuming labor, employee relations issues, things that we haven't dealt with in a very long time. And we transitioned to electronic personnel files. You heard the city clerk mention the workload associated with transitioning city documents. We don't have nearly as many as the clerk, but 450 employees' worth of files and medical files is a pretty voluminous undertaking. And we've deployed DocuSign for our recruitment and onboarding, which has helped to streamline a lot of the processes that we were previously handling through. You know, we sent to the candidate, can you print this out, sign it, scan it in, send it back? They don't have a printer, they're trying to take pictures with their phone. This has resolved all of that. It's really just brought us into this century. It was long overdue. And the most significant accomplishment, I would say, is just managing the increase in day-to-day volume with a very small staff for a large portion of last year. We've had record increase in the number of recruitments. You heard Chief Harndon mention that we have hired 38 FTE in the police department the last three years. 16 of those were last year, and that's just one department. We've had anywhere from 4X to 5X times the number of recruitments as would be typical pre-COVID. We've hired a significant number of staff in community development, in the library. Utility billings had quite a bit of turnover, and that's for a variety of reasons, but it nevertheless creates a pretty significant workload as you're offboarding and then recruiting and re-onboarding. And just to emphasize, that was with four FTE. We greatly appreciate the council's support in allowing us to add an additional position. With paid family medical leave coming online, it's desperately needed. And Mayor, you had asked about insurance.
Yes.
So we're on a five-year experience mod. Workers' comp specifically, both chiefs touched on this. It's not in this slide, but we are seeing a great improvement in our workers' comp claim numbers, not only the number of claims, but the cost per claim. Last report from HUB, they had indicated that for a jurisdiction of our size, with the number of employees we have, and also having a fire department, which a lot of cities do not have, our claim numbers and cost per claim were dramatically lower than they would expect for a jurisdiction our size. So we're on the right track, no doubt. And the other thing with the workers' comp claims is we've now negotiated with our, with SAFE, our provider, that we can cover the out-of-pocket cost for any claim that's under $2,000. We can just pay cash, well, not cash, but we can write a check for those costs.
Right.
And it brings our experience mod down. We don't get hit for those. So we've started doing that. And each year, the finance director and I will look at the individual claims and make sure that that makes sense. You know, we'll look at the cost-benefit analysis and HUB, our insurance broker, will look at that with us and make a recommendation. But we did elect to do that last year.
Good.
And also, not on the slide, but an accomplishment related to insurance that you made me think of with your question. We negotiated a new contract provision with Pacific Source, which is our healthcare insurance. And it triggers a refund to what is effectively a reserve account if our premium payments exceed actual costs by a certain threshold. So the concept behind that is that if, let's say, we pay premiums based on an anticipated increase of 15%, but our costs only register an increase of five, if we meet a certain threshold, a portion of that overpaid premium can go into a side account and be held over to offset future increases.
Oh.
So the concept being that we can even out those increases and over a period of time, we may even be able to bring our budgeted increases down because we'll have reserves. So right now, we have to budget 15% year-over-year increases for the what-if, but if we have a reserve account building up, we may not have to budget quite as much. We've seen everything from, you know, 24% in a year to 2%, so it's really hard to know where we're going to fall.
Thank you for that.
So the fun part. So threats ahead, things that the council should know we're facing. And when I say we, I don't mean human resources as a department, I mean the city in areas where HR has, plays a role. So we have certainly increased sink liability associated with our, what has been a reactive posture, just putting out fires as they pop up versus that proactive posture, making sure that we are, we have a robust learning and development program, making sure our supervisors are well-trained, making sure we have emphasis in areas where we know there's employment liability. With the recent staff addition, we're hoping to be able to really dive into this deeply in 2023. And the fact that our contract negotiations are behind us gives us a little breathing room. Munis is another area where we have, we face threats. Currently, the HR and payroll staff are, they're tripping over landmines with our system. And what I mean by that is they can be going along merrily thinking everything's working fine, there's a change or an upgrade made behind the scenes, and now suddenly something that was working previously is no longer working the way it was. And so they have to generally do a lot of manual corrections to the system to get it working again. We recently just discovered, when we do a cost-of-living adjustment, we do what's called a COLA roll in the system. The system automatically rolls forward the salary tables. It used to override the old pay codes that were used to pay those employees that are being, you know, overridden with the new ones and automatically put an end date. It no longer does that. So now we're, we have staff who are going to have to go into 400-plus records, one for each employee, and manually end date all of those. We did not used to have to do that. So these are just examples of where just the ongoing management of this system puts a real burden on city staff. There's a cost to that, not only in the employee time, but the other things that aren't getting done.
Isn't that programmable, something like that?
It's supposed to be. You'll probably hear the finance director talk about, or the IT director talk a bit about munis issues from their aspect as well. From the HR side, you know, we're not building the system behind the scenes, that's an IT thing, but certainly HR staff and payroll staff and IT staff are feeling the pain of continual changes with this system. And replacement does seem inevitable. That in and of itself represents a significant workload for HR, IT, and payroll staff. Our last process of implementing munis took about two years, and I think we had, at any given time, an average of eight to 10 staff members dedicated to that effort at any given This is, to me, one of the most critical slides, recruitment and retention. As I mentioned at the beginning, everything that we do requires people. And labor shortages are forecasted to persist for years. This is not a short-term issue for us or any employer. And I think that's the thing that I would emphasize, is the city of Albany is no different than any other employer. We feel those pressures. And I found this very interesting. The World Bank survey had found that the projected decline in the available working-age individuals between 15 and 65 was projected to decrease another 3% over the next 10 years. And if you look at the statistics from 1990 to now, the percentage of individuals of working age in the workforce has decreased from 65 to 60%. So in addition to the number of people who are working, we're also seeing locally just a skills gap there. We are having to bring back old trainee positions that we haven't had on the books for a while, just to make sure that we're able to bring someone on to do the, I'm sorry, my apologies. VPN is saying you're not connecting. Apologies. We're having to bring staff on at that lower entry level just to ensure that we have someone there to do some level of work. And of course, it's at a lower salary because it's a lower level of work, but the idea being that we're going to have to create systems in-house to train the employees and allow them to develop on the job. CDLs is another great example of that. It's incredibly difficult to find individuals with CDLs right now. So we negotiated with our AFSMI union that if someone comes on into a position that requires a CDL and they don't have one, we will pay to send them to early learner training school, acquire their CDL on city time, and they sign an agreement with us that they'll remain employed for two years or they'll pay back the cost of obtaining that. The concern being that if they come and get their CDL, they're now very valuable to the construction trade or some outside market. But just recognizing where those gaps are and trying to find creative ways to fill it to bring qualified staff to us. And I want to flag this for the council because I think it's probably one of the biggest threats we face in, in the city of Albany. We have 26 employees currently eligible to retire. That is an extraordinary number. And that's not to say they all will, but just to know that that sort of threat is out there, we need to be planning for it. And we also have another 32 coming up in the next two and a half years. Additionally, because of just the post-COVID world that exists and people are jumping ship for a variety of reasons, it could be short-term gains in their income, it could be an opportunity to work from home, which we're limited in what we can provide there. We're also seeing, you know, we expect maybe 30 to 40 additional positions to turn over in the next three years, just if current trends continue. So that's 26, 32, 98 positions out of 450.
That's a lot.
So that's 22%-ish. It's not, mental math is not my strong suit, but I'm pretty sure that's about right, 22%.
That's close enough.
Perfect question.
We get the point.
How close was I?
That's a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there ways, when you talked about recruitment, recruiting and partnering with, just like, for example, LBCC and how we work with our community partners and interning our students and they go right into the workforce, are you guys doing that, you know, actively and making it attractive for them, obviously because this threat is, seems severe?
Yeah. Our police and fire departments do a great job of being involved in those career fairs. They do face, police especially faces some challenges because they have a minimum age requirement of 21. So there's sort of a, and the chief can speak to this better, but you can hook them and get them interested in law enforcement, but there's that gap from the time that they're in, leaving school to when they could potentially come work for us. We've done a variety of career fairs. We get involved in the Chamber Youth Leadership. We have worked with partners at OSU on some projects. I know historically, our Public Works Department relied very heavily on LBCC's programs for some of the treatment division, like water treatment, or it could be wastewater, I might have that mixed, wastewater treatment. And that program no longer exists. So that is another, again, a skills gap that we're working with operations to figure out, can we establish a series classification where we bring someone in at an entry level with basic skills and they work for us and acquire their certifications as they work for us? Because we just don't have that pipeline anymore with the school. But yes, that is something that, we want to look more closely at opportunities for hiring veterans and just really expand on that. We've not had the capacity internally within HR, but we're, we're looking forward to doing that in the future.
Okay.
Yes.
I used to recruit for Agilent Technologies, HP, and veterans want to get out of those big cities and move to a smaller place and work because the schedules are ridiculous, especially when you work in, you know, 24/7, you know, duty every three or four days. Getting out of the Navy was a good thing for me. Landing in Albany was a very good thing for me. So I can help you recruit for the city of Albany.
Great. Thank you. You're hired.
It's fun for me, too. I can sell this place.
And hopefully, LBCC will be bringing back some of those programs. We have our own issues of.
Yes, and that's not to slight LBCC at all.
No, I know.
They've been great partners for us.
It's rough on that side, too, just trying to keep programming and keeping that community partnership. It's, our president's a huge thing for her to really focus on jobs and getting people employed, so definitely.
Yeah. And we have had excellent partnerships with LBCC. The counselors who've been here a while will, will know that through our, oh gosh, Economic Development Program, there was a grant fund provided to LBCC and they provided a pipeline of employees into the trades. Those didn't necessarily result in city, you know, employees for city jobs, but that it's definitely a partnership there we could try to explore and exploit in the future.
I know they did a technician apprentice program when I worked at HP, and there was a pipeline for technicians coming to work in the fabs. LBCC's been great with that.
So I think I'm about wrapping up here. I'm going to try not to pull a Wooten and go over time. Got it. Got it. Am I really? Well, it's just because I wasn't given enough time in the first place. I really am almost done.
I'm bailing around, we've been asking questions.
Let's see. I think that's my, I only have three left.
All right, Shane's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think I got to go back to right here. So you've, you've heard this touched on a bit already, and this is again, not HR's issue necessarily, this is the city's issue, but just recognizing that personnel costs are a significant factor in our budget. I think I heard Chief Wooten use the 78% was the number, I think I heard him say. So yeah, anywhere between, you know, 70 and upwards of 90% for some departments because they don't have a lot of those capital expenditures. Recognizing that when we talk about general fund constraints, 75% of the general fund budget is comprised of personnel costs. And I would encourage you, I did a fairly comprehensive overview of personnel costs, what goes into them and how they impact the budget process at the September 26 Budget Committee meeting. So I would encourage you, if you weren't at that meeting, to review that. I'll spare you tonight because apparently I'm over time. I love this quote, it's attributed to President John Adams, but I've also heard others say that Benjamin Franklin was actually the one to say this. But regardless, two great men potentially said this, that every challenge is an opportunity in disguise. So we are trying to put the positive spin on some of the challenges that we face and look at these as opportunities. Paid family medical leave insurance, we are actively working on implementing that. We're meeting with our unions to talk about how it impacts current contracts and current policy. As I mentioned, the Equal Pay Act, we need to complete an internal study this year. Best practices every three years. We need to get that first one going and then get on a routine. Compression issues with our non-bargaining and executive salary schedules, I will be coming to you as part of the budget process to talk about adjustments to the non-bargaining salary schedules to address compression issues that are known to us and that we've been talking with you about for the last two years or so, year-plus at least. We need to do, continue with our policy review, doing risk assessments and making sure we're in compliance with all of the newest legislation. That speaks directly to liability. We need to be sure that we are mitigating that liability. And again, making shifts from reactive to proactive. We're very much looking forward to being able to get out back in our departments, talking, going to department management team meetings, becoming more engaged, finding out what, how we can meet their needs instead of just putting out fires. Not that we don't love our firefighters. And then workforce planning speaks directly to that. That's assisting our departments in navigating any impacts that they may realize to their budgets, or to their staffing, rather. That's it. Do you have any other questions for me?
So do you have a specific plan for, what I'm hearing is a lot of overturn or turnover, that's the word I'm looking for. Do you have a certain plan to work with the different areas on? Do you have a certain plan to work with the different areas on their turnover?
We do informally. You know, we don't have a written plan of this position at this time. It's rarely challenging with retirements. Some retirements are known. The employee has told us, hey, I'm going in June 2023. Those are much easier to address. It's the ones that aren't known, they're out there, the employee could retire, but we don't really know their intentions and it's not really our place to inquire. But we, we need to at least be prepared and that comes through cross-training, making sure that we have qualified staff coming up behind them, whether it's tomorrow or next year. We still want to make sure that they're ready to step into that role. And that, it's a really broad umbrella of issues that fit under workforce planning because it's knowing the risk is there, but then also what are we doing to mitigate it? It's coming through employee development, it's coming through training, sort of the what-if scenarios of what if we don't backfill that position? What could go in its place? Do we have to continue to perform that function? And you'll hear the department heads start to explore those things as they have turnover. I'm trying, I'm failing to come up with a perfect example for you right now, but it's just part of our everyday ongoing conversations with department heads is identi, and I produce reports for them that show here's your, where your potential retirements are, just so that you can be aware of that risk. And the turnover aspect, just routine turnover, is really challenging to address. We just don't know until the employee puts in their notice. And this COVID era has been really challenging because they're not necessarily employees who are leaving Albany. They're not dissatisfied with their jobs here by any means. They're chasing work from home, which we have a telecommuting policy and we allow for that in some capacity where it meets business needs. But it's not, you know, for example, at the state level, they've basically said, you know, unless you're at a customer service counter, you can be 100% remote. You don't have to have office hours. That is incredibly challenging to compete with. So we have seen that. We've seen employees, in HR, in fact, one of our senior-level staff members went to the state specifically because she had a sizable raise and could work 100% from home. We couldn't compete with that.
Yes, yeah.
So those are hard to identify and forecast. It's just more of, are we being nimble in how we respond to them? Yeah.
So Holly has been the director for a year and four months, and she's done a fantastic job. You heard about the labor agreements, but then on top of that, there's the whole pandemic, the complications involved with complying with OSHA and OHA standards. And for her predecessor before her, too, it was a very, very tough time, but she's done a magnificent, Holly's done a magnificent job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Council.
You guys were making me nervous. I thought Holly and I should stand up there for a minute. Okay, Sean Park is our CIO, and I think he's still in the House and coming up.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Sean Park. I'm the IT Director here at the City of Albany. I just started my, just started my third year, thank you, Peter, my third year as Director. Been with the city for about eight years. IT is a central service department that provides information systems to every department in the city. The mission of the IT department is to implement and manage effective, efficient, and secure information services while providing excellent customer service. We ensure we acquire the right systems at the lowest cost. We administer and secure those systems and ensure they are available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Wrapped around a highly technical core is a strong spirit of customer service, where we believe every customer deserves a quick, friendly, and effective resolution to whatever problem, project, or question they might bring us. And thank you, Peter. We currently have 10.5 FTE with NIT, and today we support 497 active employees who use over 1,000 different software applications on more than 750 different systems. We responded to over 7,000 Help Desk Support tickets last year, up from 5,000 in 2021. Today, we also support a remote workforce of 121 employees, which is down from a height of over 200 workers during the COVID lockdowns.
Got it.
The structure of the IT department is illustrated here. We currently have three managers, myself included, who oversee the other 7.5 positions. The three managers within IT are very involved in day-to-day technical operations. We're still all systems administrators, and our operations include cybersecurity and infrastructure management. All IT employees are based at City Hall, except for one technician who shares his time between City Hall and the Police Department. The scope of IT's work is very broad and affects every department inside the internal network in cloud systems and extends out to partner agencies. That scope is split into two primary domains, the first of which are the mission-critical information systems that are unique to each department. For example, police and fire are relying on the computer-aided dispatch system. Community development is dependent on its central permitting and inspection system. And court is dependent on its court management system. Each department has these unique systems individual to its operations that are administered and supported by IT. The second domain of those responsibilities are systems that apply to all departments across the entire city. These include document management, HR and finance, systems driving payroll and budgets, data storage, reporting and analytics, office productivity, email, and GIS. We also provide some core technology services which round out the foundation of city information systems, including backup and disaster recovery infrastructure in case something really bad happens. Citywide network infrastructure comprised of copper fiber and wireless networks to connect all of our operations. We also provide IT project manager, management services that ensure the city follows industry standard methods for buying, testing, and implementing the most cost-effective new systems that we can. And then finally, our cybersecurity systems and infrastructure that protect the city from risk, liability, and the expense of a data breach or interrupt, interruption in service. One of the many unique disciplines within IT I would like to mention is GIS, our geographic information systems. The GIS team collects, manages, and distributes location and mapping data in support of Public Works, Community Development, and several other departments. On the public side, we have the web-based Info Hub tool, which is very popular with our citizens. It provides tax lot, boundary, and floodplain information as well as historical maps. The doorhanger program uses GIS mapping data to route our public work staff in the most efficient manner to deliver doorhanger notices to residents. The GIS team creates, modifies, and prints map data for both city and our residential customers, and its work also ensures Albany meets federal stormwater regulations. The floodplain and open space data managed by GIS helps the city save money on flood insurance premiums, too. GIS folks love to talk about their work, and we encourage you to drop by and learn more about it. They are a unique crew. IT had many accomplishments over the past biennium, and some of the more high-impact ones are listed here. Last summer, we performed a major version upgrade to our core financial system, Munus, which you may have heard about earlier, that provides payroll, budget, purchasing, HR, time sheets, and many other central financial functions. The city went live on Munus in 2019 after a two-year implementation, and last summer was our first major upgrade of that system, and it did not go well. While it resolved many security issues and brought our platform up to date, we continue to struggle with a difficult vendor regarding some very large outstanding issues. The primary problems we encounter at the moment are the application of a system update that might fix one thing but breaks two others. And that kind of relates to the comments Holly was making about, and so was Gina, Director Jaeger from Finance, about, well, we're taking one step forward and two steps back, it seems. Cybersecurity was front and center within IT Ops in the last biennium. One large element of our cybersecurity infrastructure, the Backup Data Center, is something we've been working toward for quite some time. It provides us the ability to bring parallel backup systems online at another physical location in case of an incident at City Hall, such as a natural disaster or a large cybersecurity incident that's isolated physically to City Hall. We also developed the full standards-compliant cybersecurity management plan, along with incident response playbooks to guide day-to-day operations as they relate to citywide cybersecurity as well as provide guidance during a cybersecurity incident. The incident response team was activated six times last year, and the response playbooks prove themselves to be a valuable resource for efficient, secure recovery from an incident. IT also deployed a segregated administration network, which isolates sensitive operations that we perform from the main city network, so that when something bad does happen, we have command and control separate from the rest of city systems to bring us up as soon as we can. Last summer, we deployed a new endpoint detection and response product on our user systems, which provides automated isolation of threats in real time when malicious activity is detected. We also deployed a security event information manager, which collects info, uh, security log information from all of those systems and gives us a single pane of glass into the event logs on every system. Let's see here. We were able to implement that really critical piece of cybersecurity infrastructure with nearly zero cost by adopting an open-source system. When we recorded it between $50,000 and $100,000 a year, for we're currently paying $9,000 a year for commercial support of an open-source system, and it's been a wonderful relationship. That system has been a force multiplier for IT. The Security Incident Management System also provided the capability for us to reduce the number of critical vulnerabilities on our systems by an order of magnitude. In January of 2022, we had over 40,000 critical vulnerabilities discovered on our systems. Today, we have less than 3,000. We've also deployed two new system management and inventory tools, one inside the network and the other outside the, outside the internal network to support our remote workforce. This has dramatically increased our efficiency in software installation, updates, and security patch management. Beginning in 2019, we began adopting the Windows 10 operating system to replace Windows 8.1 on our employees' workstation citywide. This was completed just a few weeks ago, just as Windows 8.1 reached end of life, and we migrated over 300 desktops to Windows 10. In the coming biennium, IT will undertake several high-impact initiatives and projects. We have two large infrastructure projects coming up in the next two years. The first one is related to our Storage Area Network. A Storage Area Network consists of large racks containing hundreds of hard drives in enclosures and controllers connected by fiber optic switches to house all of the city's data. Internally, we refer to this as our private cloud. To expand upon what city data is, it is all the information generated by all of the city's systems, from files and folders used by an employee, to public works engineering data, to body-worn camera videos, to databases and everything in between. We currently house about 2.5 petabytes of data in our Storage Area Networks, which is about 2.5 million gigabytes, or the equivalent storage capacity of about 10,000 smartphones. Combined with our virtual server infrastructure, the Storage Area Network forms the core of city information systems, but it's reaching end of life, and we hope to replace the primary Storage Area Network in late '23. We also look to deploy a citywide network intrusion detection system, which aggregates raw network traffic flow data across the city. Earlier, I mentioned we employed a security event information manager, which is a endpoint, a log aggregator, and we're going to, this new system on the network intrusion side is going to be analyzing the traffic between them. It's going to allow us to pick up on threats and bad things happening in a much quicker fashion. As mentioned earlier, oh, excuse me, another large project will be the replacement of the citywide telephone system, which has also reached end of life. 400 desk phones located in dozens of buildings across the city, and the supporting infrastructure will be replaced. And the utility billing project is also in the execution phase with a scheduled go-live of mid-2023. There are many smaller projects taking place across the next biennium with NIT, but these are a few of the larger ones we'll be managing. Challenges across the next two years primarily are related to cybersecurity. They've added a massive workload to IT operations over the last 18 months in regard to cybersecurity mandates and standards compliance. I mentioned earlier, some of the systems we deployed to increase our cybersecurity protections, and while those, those projects were necessary and consumed a lot of resources, the day-to-day operations involved with managing them is immense. At least half of my own daily workload is related to cybersecurity incident or systems management, planning, and response. This is a huge shift from even three years ago. Over time, the number of systems and their complexity naturally increase, and this is a welcome symptom of ongoing progress and an indicator of our commitment to continual improvement. These improvements tend to bring cost savings, efficiency, and modern methods of service delivery to our internal and external customers. This also means that the scope of information systems that IT is responsible for also increases over time, which exacerbates stress on personnel and the budget. Regarding risk and liability, one of the, the primary risks that we see within IT is related to data loss prevention. We currently don't have a formal method or containment policy, data classification or retention schedules, or data access auditing controls that govern all of that 2.6 petabytes of data that I mentioned earlier. A significant portion of that data is sensitive, classified as criminal justice, CGIS data, or protected medical information under HIPAA, not to mention the personally identifiable information and sensitive financial data in our custody. Our lack of progress on this front is a symptom of time and budget constraints. Greater priorities in cybersecurity and day-to-day operations consume our staff resources, and we simply don't have the budget to implement a commercial solution for, for data loss prevention at this time. And finally, cost containment is a major challenge. Working in opposition to the challenges mentioned above, generally, we cannot step up to meet our challenges and requirements without additional funding and personnel. However, considerable, considerable effort has been taken to adopt open source where possible, and that alone is, over the last 18 months, will save the city over $100,000 annually. While we cannot control labor costs, which, like many other departments, are the lion's share of our budget at about 72%, every effort is being made to control system and licensing costs across all of our systems by adopting open source and aggressively leveraging budget negotiations regarding new licensing.
Sean, is it a cost concern that we don't have a formal cloud-based backup system versus all hardware that you're using? You said you got all these actual hard drives that you're using for the backup?
It's, it's more cost-effective to host our own Storage Area Network, and we also get to keep the security of that in-house, so we're not.
All right.
Shipping that stuff out to the cloud. That's not to say we don't have some backup occurring in the cloud. We do have an immutable backup system that does push an encrypted set of that 2.6 petabytes nightly offsite.
I was going to say, that's an awful lot of hard drives to have petabytes in storage.
It definitely is, and we're constantly swapping hard drives. To touch upon a little bit of the, the, the risk and liability involved in cybersecurity, the average time to fully recover from a cybersecurity breach is 203 days, and this data was pulled from the annual IBM PMA report regarding the cost of a cybersecurity incident, which is the industry standard report. Partial recovery takes an average of two weeks. A full recovery is when all systems have returned to their previous function, whereby partial recovery is returned to limited functionality. As an example, we might be able to run a payroll, but we would have no historical data. Or we may be able to dispatch officers to a call, but they wouldn't be able to access records management. Let's see here. The two-week period leading up to that partial recovery is where the true pain comes in, and we don't have to look far for recent major attacks. The nearest examples would be the ransomware attack on Lynn County last January, which took many county resources offline for nearly two months, and a phishing attack on the city of Portland last April that convinced finance staff there to send a $4 million wire transfer to the bad guys. As I mentioned earlier, the workload in IT has grown continually over time. However, beginning in 2017, the number of IT employees has been reduced annually, and in the past three fiscal years of '21, '22, and '23, the annual IT budget was also reduced. To clarify, this was not a decrease in the amount of an anticipated increase, but was a literal deduction of dollars in the budget from one year to the next. These sacrifices were made to help with budget shortfalls in other departments. This chart here shows where IT's two-year biennial budget sits in the context of the other general fund departments, where IT is at just over $5 million per year in the current biennium of 2022 and 2023. The natural growth of information systems and requirements over time leads to an increased workload. The first two charts illustrate that natural growth over time by showing the number of Help Desk tickets and the number of systems handled by IT, which provide a good measure of scale and growth. Contrasted with the growth we see in the first two charts, the third chart on the right is not going up, where we would expect it to follow the other two trends. It's actually been going down for the last five years. But technology continues to grow in scope and complexity. For example, the addition of body-worn cameras at the Police Department did not come with resources to support. resources to support those devices day-to-day or the infrastructure that is required to use them, such as expanded wireless networks, data storage infrastructures, and backup systems. Before COVID, we did not have a remote workforce, but today we support over 120 users in their systems, while also managing parallel deployment, inventory, and security infrastructures, one which manages the internal network and another that manages those remote systems. These, these examples of growth in the use of technology are not balanced with the resources that are necessary to support it. The budget and personnel trends we see here do take a toll on staff. In 2018, the overtime budget within IT was eliminated due to funding cuts. IT no longer has overtime eligible employees on standby or callback. This has shifted the responsibility of after-hour support to employees who are exempt from overtime, of which there are three, including myself. In 2022, those three employees donated 356 hours of their time, equivalent to over two months in unpaid overtime and that takes a real, a real toll on work-life balance. And we do have overtime eligible employees, but we have no overtime budget to pay them Compared to similar cities, the ratio of number of employees to IT staff is the highest in the City of Albany. This chart's, this chart illustrates, for example, that in Tiger, that in Tiger, the ratio is 18 employees for each IT employee and Albany, that number is 47. The closest similar city is Corvallis, which has a ratio that is still 45% less than Albany's. IT staff in Albany have a considerably higher employee support workload than similar cities. Again, compared to similar cities, Albany to IT has the lowest budget, nearly 40% lower than Springfield, the closest similar city in terms of funding. Compared to the highest-funded IT budget among similar cities, which is Tiger, Albany IT is funded at less than half that amount. In closing, I, I'm gonna make it on time, aren't I? All right. Toward the end of this presentation, we got into budget and staffing levels and the narrative tended to get a little, little gloomy, but that doesn't paint a complete picture of the department. IT is a small team that's used to working behind the scenes. We're not public-facing, but we're extremely proud of the work that we do. Supporting every department, every operation within the city, from Public Works and Parks to Police and Fire. The, the resourcefulness and ingenuity of the individuals on this team continually amaze me. The team does marvelous creative things with limited resources and I feel incredibly fortunate to be part of it. I do have a minute? Do I have a minute? I asked them, I asked the team if there are any particular elements of the past two years which they felt, felt especially accomplished and what they'd like me to relay to the council on their behalf. And since I have a moment, I'll mention a few of those comments they made. One of them is in 2020, we had to instantly mobilize to deploy a remote workforce due to COVID. In 2021, realizing this was going to turn into a permanent operation, I appreciate how the team works together to support this now-permanent telework infrastructure and the remote users who rely on it and how those systems work so smoothly due to the team effort. Another team member mentioned we created an online crime map for the Albany Police Department, showing the location, time, and type of crime within the city. This has been a huge help to APD as they use this map to study spatial and temporal time patterns in crime. Now I have to point out that I especially like that one because the terminology used clearly indicated it came from a GIS guy. All right. We went live with many new systems for our municipal court. Virtual court allows defendants to appear before the judge without leaving their home. A new interactive voice menu for customers to make payments over the phone, and a new online payment system that makes it much easier for defendants to pay fees online. All these improvements make it easier for citizens to access our services and provide them more options. And finally, we created a new automated process for the distribution of police case files to the Lynn County Sheriff's Office for use by the District Attorney's Office. This dramatically decreased the amount of time police records staff spend on transferring case files to the DA. And thank you for giving me a moment to pass along those, those comments from my team. I appreciate it and take a moment for any questions you might have.
Your mic's on. Oh, excuse me. I, I, I apologize you have to give, you know, donate those hours to the city and I'm hoping that this council and things will bear out that we can help with that problem. I know it is a problem because I hate giving away money myself, so I totally understand.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
You guys do great work and the last two years with us being on Zoom and all the changes, everything, we couldn't have done it without you. And your staff, let them know we all greatly appreciate your work and I'd love to buy you guys a cup of coffee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pass that along.
All right.
Any questions? About anything that we've covered tonight, if you want?
You have a lot to think about.
You have a lot to think about and I'll, so I'll just, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll close up with just a couple of things. We're midway through and tomorrow you'll hear from Parks, from Finance, from Public Works, Community Development, and Library. So I want, I want to leave you with three thoughts midway through. The first one is General Omar Bradley in World War II used to say that amateurs talk about tactics and experts talk about logistics. And for us, the delivery of services on the front line, whether it's in the Police Department, Fire Department, Library, Parks, Public Works, as you can see, is contingent upon the successful execution of a big, long logistics tale in people, in money, in information, in policy, in leadership, in insurance, and on and on. The second thing, and, and so because of that, you know, we, when you, when you hear presentations like Sean's and Holly's this evening and Gina's tomorrow, you get a feel for what, what we need to effectively deliver the services that we, we, we deliver. The second thing is the complexity of the organization that you oversee, that you manage. You've heard a wide, wide range of stuff tonight, but you'll hear even more tomorrow. And the third thing is just, I hope you'll share my sentiment about the quality of the leaders that you have leading your departments. I'm very proud of each one of them and I think they bring extraordinary talent and leadership ability to, to our city, so I'm very grateful for them. And I'm gonna look forward to hearing more tomorrow. Thank you.
With that, I'll adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you all for coming and thank you Budget Committee members for attending tonight.